Thanks, Steve. I'll call the Finance and Law Subcommittee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, October 16th. Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mr. Souza.
Present.
Also in attendance this evening, we have Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. First item on the agenda this evening is student activity requests. East Taunton Elementary School is looking for $3,906.80 to replenish its student activity account. And Elizabeth Pol School is looking for $2,298.34 to replenish its student activity account.
Move approval. I reviewed them and it's their money and move approval as presented.
I'll second that. Note that most of them are expenses related to year-end events.
Yes.
Motion has been made and seconded. All is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Bill's payable. We have bills payable this evening in the amount of $1,396,085.13. Do we have any questions or a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Monahan, I have a question on page two. Amigo? Second one down.
Yes, it is for a student's tuition for July and August and out of district.
They're an autism center.
Is it?
Yeah.
I guess I just don't remember that name. It's an autism center?
Yes.
I'm assuming it's a high-level case. So, two months.
Correct.
Thank you. I just don't remember that name. And amigo, I just thought it may have been a...
They're based in Attleboro.
I thought it may have been a, like, something different, but that's okay. So, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Motion being ordered.
Motion to approve the warrant as presented in the amount of $1,396,085.13.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Item number three, we have a facilities update. So, I don't know if the superintendent wants to take this. Ms. Monahan, fire away.
So, I know that you would like to know about the Bennett Playground. There is still a part that is still to be installed and that will be happening in the spring. But as of right now, everything has been done. They did run into some rain delays when they poured the rubber. As of today, I was told that kids will be able to play on it as on Friday. So, it's a little muddy to get there, but we'll be reseating it pretty soon as well. But we want the kids to get out there and at least to try it out.
Very nice.
So, the, excuse me, the pot that's missing will not hinder them from using?
No, it will not. It's just another piece of equipment that will be installed.
So, it's not really a pot, it's a piece of equipment?
No.
Okay.
Right. To install the big piece. Mulcahy, we did receive notification from Columbia Gas. They will be coming back onsite early next week to continue working to bring in the new line into the new Mulcahy school. So, they will be, once we know the exact start date, Principal Dakota will be contacting families to let them know that there will be some traffic, additional traffic, road closures. So, again, changing the routes of pickup and drop-off. And we will have Taunton Police as extra details during that time for drop-off and pickup.
That would, Mr. Chairman, through you, that would be helpful. I know I was over there, no, I was over there with the superintendent a couple of weeks ago, in that area, I shouldn't say at the facility. And we saw the construction. Are they done? Do you know if they're done on the road and they're just going for the tie-in or they're still working on the road?
They are, the last time...
The length of your feet there looks like they're probably still working on the length of your feet.
They are almost right directly in front of the school. So, they are just about done in that whole Clifford Street. So, they are now in the, right at the, right at the front of the school.
That's going to be a little bit of a...
That was a question I had for the School Building Committee meeting, which didn't happen this Tuesday, but will happen next Tuesday. Because once the states had ceased and desist, they took their equipment away.
Really?
And they weren't done.
Only priority work was to be addressed.
So, evidently, they got permission to go back and finish this. That was a concern I had.
Yes.
Credit to Mayor Hoyer, too. He did some good work on this.
Yeah.
Because if that didn't happen, we were...
Up the creek.
Yes.
In the bad state of affairs as far as opening that school nest of talent.
I think that's a good point, Mr. Chairman, that, I'm glad you brought that up because people think that's just a marmot valley, but that's affecting the whole state when they shut them down.
Everything in the city was, that was being done, was stopped.
And as of, and we did, I attended today's construction meeting. We're still on target. Things look great. They are now closing off to winterize, to get ready to start beginning all of the internal work. So, everything is looking just to be fine as of now. As you see, you do have something that is on the table, and it is a letter from NESRA Engineering. Just so I'll give you a little bit of an update of what is on here. It is, NESRA has previously done some completing of work for us and did a study for tennis courts, our varsity baseball field, and also our JV baseball field. But this one here that we're looking at for him, for this company to do, the proposed study is multiple. It is to check out the track and field at the high school, to inspect the athletic field, the upper practice field alongside of Williams Street, the JV softball field with adjacent, an adjacent practice field. So, we're having, this proposal is to do all of that, but the most important thing is he's going to be preparing three schematic designs and what each one is. The first one is considered to be a high-end renovation, which will include, and mostly this work is for the high school track and field and athletic field. So, it is for high-end renovation, which will include the track and field, storage building, upper rectangular practice field, junior varsity softball fields, and adjacent practice field. So, that's the first. The second one is an alternative, which will include the track and field renovations, storage building, and the upper rectangular practice field. The last alternative will be the bare minimum, and that should be accomplished to bring the track and field facility to a modern competition standards. So, all three alternatives will be accompanied by a probable construction cost estimate. This scope of service will cost the district, if it is approved by school committee, not to exceed $8,200. And if school committee approves this scope of work, we will go ahead and have Attorney Gay's office review the contract before authorizing any work, as he has done, that office has done so in the past.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cabral. Sorry. So, I just want to reiterate, as Mrs. Monahan did a nice job summarizing all the scope of the work. This will provide us with a master plan for the high school so that we can plan work accordingly over a three-to-five-year period of time, or as funds became available and revolving. So, it'll be a one-time comprehensive plan, similar to what we did with the baseball field, where we had multiple alternatives.
Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. And I also would like to note that part of the, part of this scope is also to put the whole facility on CAD program. So, it's a high-end 3D CAD program that he's going to be using as part of this letter, and I'm very familiar with that. So, this is, this will be a good plan to keep everything computerized, and we know what's going on. And, you know, it's too bad 10 years ago, we didn't have what we, we, not 10 years, almost 10 years ago, we raided the high school, I guess, and have at least some place to stop. But this is gonna, once you have it on a CAD system, you'll have it forever. And we'll be able to keep it here somewhere and know what's going on and move forward, even if we have to do it in pieces. So, that's a good, that's a good thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got to say that I've been very happy with the work that NESRA has done for us in the past, and I have to agree with Mr. Souza also, that we'd be a tremendous advantage having all of our schemes automated so that they're much easier to update or possibly do in phases rather than having to do them all at once. But I'd certainly like to see as much of that accomplished as possible. I think the university softball field particularly has gotten really short shrift. We put all that money into, into the baseball program last year, and I think, I think the girls deserve input as well. So, I hope we can accomplish as much as we can with this plan.
Mr. Chairman, does the administration want to move forward this with a motion?
I would, I mean, I would recommend the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the, we authorize the administration to move forward with this project as presented, not to exceed $8,200.
Second.
Would the maker of the motion agree to add to that motion that the $8,200, not to exceed $8,200, come from the athletic maintenance account?
That's part of the motion.
Because this project entails refurbishing the track and football field.
And, you know, Mr. Chairman, with the foresight...
That's what the money's for.
The foresight of yourself when you were in Ms. Monahan's position, and since you've been on the committee, and Mr. Fiore, since he's been on and off the committee at different times and at the other seat, other part of government, to the foresight of a lot of people, when we talked about this when I came on 10 years ago, now that revolving costs paying dividends because we're able to use it, we have the funds to do that. So, kudos to everyone.
So, you, that's okay to add to your motion?
Part of the motion.
Okay, on the second.
On the second.
Motion has been made to authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract subject to Attorney Gay's approval to...
Yes. Part of the motion. Prove for the language.
Approve the document that's in front of us this evening, not to exceed $8,200, and that the funds for the project come from the athletic revolving maintenance account.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Ms. Monahan and the superintendent, do we have an idea on how long it's going to take to gather the information and get it on the program and that? Three months? Four months?
We were shooting for, I believe we were shooting for late December, January, being able to go out to bid around that time. So, I believe between now, November, and December, we should have the information, and NESRA can assist us with preparing the bid documents. So, we should have it fairly quickly, quickly.
That's a pretty aggressive...
Plus, he's very, he's very familiar with the site. He's done work there before.
It's pretty aggressive.
So, minimally, we're going to go out to bid for the track and the field, football field, minimally. And we'll see what the other aspects...
As I, yes, as I've discussed with Arsene on NESRA, priority is that turf field. We actually absolutely have to get the turf field done. I think that's our priority. The track would be priority, would be priority, too, but I think we could go another year if we had to. But the turf field, we've exhausted the life of the turf field, because when you walk on the turf field now, you can see the rubber. Where, and you notice the difference when you go on the baseball field. The baseball field, it's like a plush carpet, whereas the football field...
It's all matted down.
It's matted down. And no matter how much the guys, our groundskeepers, work on the football field, they're not going to get it to the level at the turf field. So, it's time. It's provided, it's given us what we intended and then some. I think we were looking at eight to 10 years.
We got more than that.
We did, we did. So, we, we got our money's worth out of that field.
On the motion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Thank you. Anything else on the facilities? Okay, we've covered Mulcahy, we've covered Bennett, we've covered the high school athletic complex.
There's no, there's no other, you know, the open project? What was that?
That's your question?
End of year report, which was due September 30th? October 1st?
Actually, October 1st, but we did receive an extension, and we are working on our final numbers. There's a new thing that neither one of you, you, Mr. Martin, and of course Superintendent Cabral, have not done in the past. It's a new thing called excessive costs, and it has been a nightmare to get things done, but we're working on it together with the ladies in the business office. They've been phenomenal, Nancy Simmons and Susan Bullock. So, we are working on some of the outlay debts that we're trying to comprise, but my goal is to have it ready to go by tomorrow, so.
What would come under the category of excessive costs?
It's a whole new thing. So, what it's doing is, it's brand-new to the entire state. It really had minimal training to us. They talked to other business managers in the, in the surrounding towns, and it is basically trying to break down all of our costs by having it, like, elementary school to high schools. You have to break down all the costs and between all the schedules, and you have to break them down, like, pre-K to four, and then grades five through 12. So, when you are not, you know, some of our software doesn't have that, we really have to drill into the numbers.
Schedule three used to do that.
It's now, it's, it's a little bit different. If you want, you can come by and I'll show you.
Oh, that's okay.
I'll be happy to show you.
I think this would be a good time for a motion to adjourn.
Misery loves country.
Motion has been made and...
Seconded.
To adjourn.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
It's been more difficult since Mr. Cor retired.
Yes.
I might go, I'll probably go to one next session. I'll go to the right. We good, Steve? Meeting called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Thank you, Salma. Good evening, everyone. Could we, Ms. Salma, would you be so kind as to take the roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Starry?
Present.
Mr. Souza?
Present.
Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mr. Chairman?
Present.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida's present, and Mr. Mayor.
Present. Approval of the minutes from October 2nd, 2019.
Vote approval.
Second.
Motion remains second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next is the Student Council Representative Report, and we'd like to welcome Taunton High School Junior Emily O'Gara.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mayor Hoy. My name is Emily O'Gara, and I'm part of the junior class at Taunton High School, and I'm the Student Council Secretary. Some of the recent events that are come, that are to come in Taunton High include: The first term of the school year is closing on November 3rd. Taunton High has parent-teacher conferences tomorrow night, the 17th of October, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. As well, next Wednesday is the Honors Recognition Breakfast for honors students. We, they get muffins and certificates as they walk into the cafeteria, and we normally get tiger stripes. Also, Mr. Maddos thanks us for our hard work and encourages us to maintain our diligence. Also, on that day, the 23rd, the AFJR OTC unit has a national evaluation visit. It's really big for them, and they come and evaluate the branch, classrooms, subjects, and just get an overview of what they do from day to day. As well, today at Taunton High was the PSAT Day. Testing took place for 9th, 10th, and 11th grade students. At the same time, seniors got to explore college and career opportunities, and they just had to get a note from the college, and their absence was excused. Also, in the building, the 8th graders had an alternative schedule and did other activities as the other students were testing. Another update is the high school student council has our Fall CMAS meeting next Friday. There will be workshops on different leadership and learning opportunities, as well as elections for our regional student council president. During that meeting, the students and supervisors will also be participating in a breast cancer walk. Also, the MDA walk is from, is on November 3rd from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Sports teams and clubs, as well as the general public, are strongly encouraged to attend. Student Council is in the preliminary phases of Planning Spirit Week, which include football games, homecoming, Black and Orange Day, pep rally, dodgeball, powder puff, and much more. And Mr. Maddos would like to wish Superintendent Cabral a Happy Bosses' Day. Thank you.
Mr. Man? Mr. Souza, you had a...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Emily, for the report. I just have one question.
Thank you.
So, the, the MDA walk that the Stucos putting on, that's from 9:00 to 1:00, they're going to walk the whole time?
Yes. So, normally, there's other activities that go on during it, like different, there's like a photo booth and like, they don't have to stay as long from 9:00 to 1:00. They can just go walk a few laps, or if they want to stay longer, they can...
So, it'll be continuous the whole time?
Yes.
In other words, off and on, so you can go any time to walk?
Yeah. People can take breaks to, like, do different stuff, eat food, they have food there.
I was talking to my colleague, Mr. DeMello. We were going to go, but we said we can't, we couldn't last four hours.
You can only go for a little bit. You don't have to stay the whole time.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank, thank you for that, Mr. Souza. Emily, great job. It's our motion to accept the report. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, so voted. Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you, too.
Unless you, you're welcome to stay. I don't blame you.
Yeah, I attest to that.
Good, good call.
Thank you.
Next, we have public input. And signed up for public input is Rosemary Marks of 401 Berkeley Street. She's here to talk about social-emotional learning. Rosemary, and you have just, you have five minutes and to make your statement. Thank you.
I just wanted to say a few words because I was at the youth forum, and I just would like to thank everybody who was there. And I just want to make everyone who wasn't aware there aware of some things that were brought up that, you know, was eye-opening as a parent, and also backing some of the students that I know who was there speaking. Maybe everyone didn't understand what some of the children were trying to get across that I know they were, because one of them is one of my children. The access center is not accessible the way some people think it is to students, so I don't know how it can be fixed. So, for social people, like children who are having problems with depression, we've had the loss of suicide in our community way too often. So, we need to do something to help these students, and I don't feel like we're doing enough. I don't know what we can do to change things, but I know for a fact that my student and several others also talked after the meeting have used the access center. It was not accessible in the proper manner. So, somehow, we need to change things. They said that when they go there, sometimes their name is called out in class, other people make fun. I know, for an instance, I had gone down to the school one time with my student, and the lady made my student cry in front of me, like, that's not what the student is there for. So, technically, that's only creating more stress and aggravation on the student. So, we need to do something different to help these students. And I felt like they were pretty brave to get up there and talk about the things they did talk about. And I know that Mr. Maddos went into SAD and talked to them the other day, and he did discuss with them that they needed to go through him before they brought these kind of things in the public forum next time, which is kind of difficult. Like, when my child came home and told me that he was kind of upset that they were spoken to about it, because he felt like they had the right to discuss whatever they needed to that night to bring forth. And I also don't think that everybody got the gist of what everybody was saying. Like, my child is the one who talked about suicide, and he had written a small book about it. And he started his thing by saying the word bullying, so everybody focused on bullying. And it wasn't just strictly on bullying. He actually has the true depression. But everybody focused their problem on his bullying, and he was like, everybody missed the whole rest of my story, Mom. Everybody missed that I was in the hospital. Everybody missed that I'm having a problem with depression right now. Everybody missed that I am suicidal right now. Like, nobody listens to the children. Nobody listens just because they're teenagers or whatever. Like, yeah, we have problematic teenagers and whatever, but they still need help. They still need to be heard. They still need someone to listen to them. It's still part of their education. They cannot participate fully in class and get the proper education if their emotional well-being is not being taken care of. And if they go to guidance, guidance is nothing to do with any kind of social-emotional, which I never knew that before. Because I asked my child, well, you're, you know you're guidance person, so why don't you go to guidance? We can't go to guidance because guidance has nothing to do with socialness. You have to go to the access center. But the access center doesn't help us. So, I don't know what, as a group, you guys can come up with, or what anyone can come up with. I know my child's a senior, so it's not like long for my child, but I'm talking about it for everybody's child, because everybody should have that access. I've seen my children's friends, Brett Plude, Casey Palm, David Puster, so many people are not here with us anymore. And I think that we need to do something for all teenagers and all people around us, because too many kids are not here anymore. And somebody needs to fight for these kids. I don't know. Something needs to be talked about, something needs to be done. These people need more training. I mean, nobody has training to watch these kids. I know for a fact that my child is having a problem with his depression right now. He's been in school, and he told me one night, I've been crying all day in school. I said, not one teacher saw you crying? He's a senior. You don't see a senior child crying in class and nobody notices and nobody says a thing? Nobody contacts the parent or anything? Like, that's amazing to me. A senior kid, like, you don't see that as a problem, that a child is sitting there crying? I was totally amazed that not one person felt the need to contact me or send him to guidance or send him to wherever access, if they even do anything, or whatever. Like, that was just crazy. When I contacted his therapist, she said, nobody from the school noticed? Nobody noticed a senior student, 17-years-old, crying and thought something was wrong? Like, something's wrong with that picture. I mean, if it was any one of your children and you, and a teacher doesn't tell anybody that the person is sitting there crying at their desk, and it's not that he doesn't want to go to school, because he absolutely loves school, and he's getting A's, and he's working really hard, and he's in AP classes, he just can't get past his sadness for some reason. And I'm working on it on my end, but, I mean, somebody needs to work on it at the school end. I mean, there has to be somebody there that sees something. I mean, I can't be in school. I can't go sit next to him. And people need to listen to these kids. If they're going to speak out and they're going to say, I want some help, I mean, people can't shut them down and be like, oh, yeah, you know, it's fine. I was bullied before, I was this before, I was that before. That's not the answer. That's, that's not the answer. Because all you're doing is shutting these kids down and you're making them not speak. And then they're not going to speak, and then that's when they're not going to be here. That's not the way to handle it.
We will, the way it works, ma'am, we take, take your comments under advisement, and we will discuss it. But we don't, we don't respond to the comments. That's just the school committee rules. But thank you. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. Next on the agenda is the District Accountability Review 2018 and 19. Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium Mr. Christopher Barata. Mr. Barata is going to provide us with an overview, provide us with a dive into our accountability review. He also has brought his team with him today, so I'll let him introduce his team when it's appropriate. And I'll just start off by saying, or borrowing a line from Mark Abrams, whose school finance workshops I used to attend on End of the Year Report. He would always start the workshop by saying, "End of the Year Report, we'll do the workshop. It'll get clearer, but it'll never be clear." So, after Mr. Barata's presentation, hopefully, the accountability data and how we are graded and how we're doing becomes a little clearer as far as the waters and the changes that are going on at the state level. I do want to say, we've done some great work. I'm proud of the work that we've done, and Mr. Barata will highlight some of the great work that we've done, along with his team.
yeah, you know, it's fine, I was bullied before, I was this before, I was that before." That's not the answer. That's, that's not the answer, because all you're doing is shutting these kids down, and you're making them not speak, and then they're not going to speak, and then that's when they're not going to be here. That's not the way to handle it.
We will, the, the way it works, ma'am, we take, take your comments under advisement, and we will discuss it, but we don't, we don't respond to the comments, that's just the school committee rules, but thank you, thank you for your comments, we appreciate Next on the agenda is the district accountability review two thousand eighteen and nineteen. Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium, Mr. Christopher Barata. Mr. Barata is going to provide us with an overview, provide us with a dive into our accountability review, and he also has brought his team with him today, so I'll let him introduce his team when it's appropriate. And I'll just start off by saying, or borrowing a line from Mark Abrams, whose school finance workshops I used to attend on End of the Year Report, he would always start the workshop by saying, "End of the Year Report, we'll do the workshop, it'll get clearer, but it'll never be clear." So after Mr. Barata's presentation, hopefully, the accountability data and how we are graded and how we're doing becomes a little clearer, as far as the waters and the changes that are going on at the state level. I do want to say, we've done some great work, I'm proud of the work that we've done, and Mr. Barata will highlight some of the great work that we've done, along with his team, but we also know that that's not good enough. So we, I'd like to, like to quote that Mr. Barata has to start his PowerPoint presentation, "Good is the enemy of great." So obviously, we want to get to great, we're not satisfied or happy with just being good. So at this point, I'll turn things over to Mr. Barata.
Thank you, everyone, good evening, and as Mr. Cabral said, we are combating good in the district, and we want to keep moving forward, leaning in, challenging ourselves, and challenging our students most importantly, and meeting their needs. And I have a need of technology here. So in the meantime, this has, brings back a personal experience, when I was in high school, I was president of the key club, and I went to a monthly Kiwanis meeting, which as the chapter leader at our building kept saying, "Hey, Barata, how come you go down every month?" Because it was free meals, and I knew that. So I said, "Well, I'm modeling, you know, for the younger students, what it is to be an active key club member." So finally came down to the spring after about nine visits down there, and I'm exaggerating on nine, said, "Well, Barata, you keep showing up, so it's about time you produce some type of presentation." So I reached out, "Who can we do, who can we do, we get..." And that year happened to be Year of the Child, which was United Way. So I said, "How perfect, how lucky I was to be able to link, you know, the United Way with the Kiwanis meeting." I was all excited, the gentleman from United Way was all excited, he goes, "Well, Chris, I have a presentation, you know, the carousel with the slides going through and stuff, and Chris, it'll be great, it'll be thirty minutes, everyone will be entertained, you know, it's a great linkage, what's going on at Kiwanis." And we started off, and three minutes in, the bulb burned out, and there wasn't an extra bulb, so it was just talking to people for the next thirty minutes, and needless to say, I was not invited back down to lunch for the remainder of that year. But great, Steve Jakes, thank you so much. So the first slide talks about the vision statement derived from the protocol or profile of a TPS graduate student. Now, as we realize, we had four schools undergoing Promising Practices Routine, developing sustainable improvement plans, and part of the process really had to deal with, what do you want your student, our student, the children in Taunton to be upon graduation from Taunton High School? And once they identified all those components or attributes of a graduate of Taunton High School, they came up with this vision statement, which I challenge you to think about, regardless of what level we are at, elementary, middle, or high school, this really should be the North Star of every building. "We envision a school community built upon strong relationships, accountability, shared responsibility, and deep concern for developing academically and vocation-prepared, socially-responsible, and civically-engaged students. We strive for a community that is safe, student-centered, welcoming, and respectful. Our community will be collaborative, inclusive, and transparent to meet the needs of our students and cultivate their individual strengths. Our educators believe that all students can develop the skills, habits of mind, and resilience to become global city, citizens in the twenty-first century." So, the work that's undergone in the high school and the planning process last year, which produced this statement, is actually a great statement for the whole district, as we know that the strength of any district really is, which is the high school, and what does that produce coming out of the K through eleven experience? So the purpose of tonight's presentation, provide an overview of our accountability results, highlight aspects of the district's performance, and articulate next steps in action planning. Now, the district accountability report, this is again, is on our, the DESI website, it's for public consumption, and there is some changes, if you remember, we go back to last year or prior years, where one important change is follows. Way back in the time machine, when you had one school in need, say, Level Three, even if it was one school, your whole district was labeled. Now, DESI and the approach that we've learned, not only working with the statewide system of support, SSOS, is under the Commissioner Riley, and through working with the SOS, DESI is really looking at being a collaborative partner with school systems, and not hanging the punitive label on districts. So when we look at the entire accountability report, it looks at all of our schools as one body, and then obviously parses out what points were made and what status we are at. So looking at this, and again, I'll be repeating a little bit from what we had last year, what really is important is student achievement, and the focus, okay? Student achievement, growth obviously is important, high school completion and such, but there's two categories here, first one is really important, the district achieved forty-one percent of its targets, which means we are a moderate progress towards our targets. Now, obviously, our goal would want to be at fifty percent, which means we'd make substantial movement towards our goals, but as of right now, and what we hear later on about the processes we've put in place, we're on a good trajectory for show longstanding, sustainable supports. Again, going back to a little bit about the point totals, we see down below, you see point values from zero, one, two, three, and four, just want to recap that for you. Where you see, in this report and others, if you take the time to look at the DESI website, wherever we earned a zero, which means our scores or our categories on that side declined, a one means no change, two means we improved, three means we met our target, four, we exceeded our targets. So it's important to know once again, that achievement really carries the weight with the sixty percent type of a total of where we are at. This accountability report represents two years and two years only of data. Remember, last year, we all went over to the new system, K through twelve, this year here as well. This year's report carries sixty percent of overall weight, with the two thousand eighteen version as forty percent. So as we look later on, at specifically, say, at the high school, you know, you always want to capitalize on your strengths and doing well, because it's difficult, then to make up the gaps. So this year with sixty percent, for example, with the high school doing well, that's great, okay? But what are we going to do next year, which then goes back to that original statement, "Good is the enemy of great." Then we highlighted, just in generally, the district-level ELA, MCAS, and district-level math performance across the years of two thousand seventeen through two thousand nineteen. And as you will note, there are some irregularities and patterns, there isn't a straight-line trajectory of upwardness, okay? Again, that also goes to the fact of what we rolled out last year, not only in those four schools focusing on Promising Practices, but also the work we've done in all the remaining buildings, developing ILTs and really looking at data in meaningful ways, again, capitalizing on the work already done with our curriculum coordinators, our curriculum supervisors and coaches in the buildings. And one little notice, down below, we see Grade Ten in the gray category. Again, it was the first year going over from the legacy test, the paper, to the digital format, and that's why that graph looks a little bit off. Now, going back in the wayback machine of last year's accountability status, I just want to point out some areas of change. If you notice here, again, last year's, you see the, this area here was meeting targets or partially meeting targets, and the next slide, you're going to see what the state did to alter that area of focus. Again, this is last year's targets, last year's performance, where we identified our four schools undergoing development of sustainable improvement plans, those being Parker, Mulcahy, Taunton High School, and Martin, identifying the areas of low subgroup performance with Martin and Taunton High School. Also highlighting on those schools that don't provide any information, that being Taunton Alternative High School, because the number of students is so small, and obviously, we do not test below Grade Three, which means, out of the thirteen buildings, only eleven produced results in this accountability rating. Now, the new version, the accountability rating, as you'll notice, as I pointed out early in the earlier slide, you went from those two categories of meeting or exceeding categories, they've actually broken that into multiple categories, where you have limited or no progress of targets, moderate progress, substantial progress, and meeting or exceeding targets. Again, it's the state also looking at moving forward, identifying clearly where schools are. So it's not just, "Well, we're in a category, we're, we're part of this eighty-five percent, we require no assistance, no intervention," and then over here, we have schools that require intervention, but it actually spells out, "Are you moving in the right direction?" So I will point to one aspect, which is very important, Taunton High School. Taunton High School moved out of the schools requiring assistance or intervention because they've achieved the sixteenth percentile. Again, not where we want to be, but it's good enough now because we're out of that lowest tenth percent. Three schools that are still below that tenth percentile are Parker, Mulcahy, and Martin. Now, it should be noted that they might feel deflated, and actually, during last year's process, the high school included of, "Well, what's going to happen, what's going to happen?" Last year was a year of planning. So when we did make improvements, really, it comes down to like the high school focusing on, "Okay, what are we going to do?" So just the aspect of focusing on improvement, obviously moved the needle in a positive way. What's going to be really important is when we fully implement the plans that are developed, what will happen next year? And again, those three schools will have, that's Martin, Mulcahy, and Martin, will continue to have direct support from the statewide system of support, SSOS, Joe Petten, and we talked about Hillary Brezner hand, and although they've breached the tenth percentile, Taunton High School, Joe Petten and the crew is still going to be meeting with the high school. When and if we receive grants, that was a follow-up from last year, the planning access, Taunton High School will not receive that funding, however, the other three schools will. So we'll look at shifting monies inside and resources to address Taunton High School's plans while balancing off the grant monies that hopefully we'll see and hear very soon about Parker, Mulcahy, and Martin. So again, Taunton High School ups to sixteenth percentile, and that's across the state. So that's the difference between percentiles and targets. Targets are your internal targets, how you're performing against your own students within the building itself. Percentiles rating that school versus every other school in that category across the state. So although we look at some areas and say, "Boy, thirty-nine percent of their target isn't good," or, for example, down here, where we see Elizabeth Poll, twenty-third percentile, but sixty-two percent of the target, E-Poll is a very, it's amazing story. Three years ago, they entered in the turnaround process that they called it then voluntarily, going through the plans, developing systems and such. They continue to hit their targets, again, starting from an area the school's been struggling, but has continued to make improvement, and if we look a little bit deeper, not in this presentation, but if another presentation wants to go on later on, is that E-Poll's moving a lot of students from not meeting expectations, which we consider as failing, to partially meeting, and that movement itself continues to show that E-Poll is moving in the right direction. Again, that's proof, if you develop a solid plan, which we know those four schools have, Parker, Mulcahy, Martin, and Taunton, and if you follow that plan with fidelity, good things happen. And again, that's actually working with E-Poll, who has had no additional support from SSOS, that really goes down to the hard work of the teachers in this building, the leadership, and the coaches and curriculum coordinators who work with the staff in this building. Now I have a little video, because you're probably getting sick of listening to me talk, because it actually, I think it's appropriate to hear from what is going on at the state level, and what the state believes should be happening. Again, this mimics what Commissioner Riley has spoken about in multiple conferences, whether it's urban superintendents, or last week, the mass-tiered Systems of Supports meeting, so if you'd like to move over, if you need to move over, it's about a four-minute or three-minute video clip.
Massachusetts is setting very high expectations for its students in hope that they will be successful once they leave the classroom and education system. They're trying to incorporate habits of mind and ways of thinking and application on top of just learning content.
I believe that the standards provide, you know, a solid foundation for our students from which they can build throughout their academic experiences, in terms of the content that should be taught, as well as the skills that should be mastered at different grade levels.
We want students to engage in meaningful, real-world problems every day. Our hope is that they would take the knowledge and skills learned in the classroom and use that in everyday life and society.
Standards are important because they make sure that everyone is aligned, right? They give every classroom purpose, they ground you in what you're trying to accomplish every day, and they also maintain equity for kids across classrooms, and it makes sure that everyone's getting a fair opportunity at a quality education.
So really, they're measuring what kids can do and how kids think, instead of can they memorize their multiplication tables.
We've got math content that we need to learn, but we're trying to come across the other direction with how students should engage with it, and building their skills and their habits, not just their knowledge of how to solve for x or how to take a derivative, but their, their knowledge of how to engage with problems and do kind of structured problem solving.
If I'm just saying, when I divide fractions, I just multiply by their reciprocal, or I just keep change flip. That's not going to help my student to be able to apply those skills later, but if I teach them to look for the patterns, and how patterns make up mathematics and logical thinking and looking at those patterns, that's going to help them engage in that mathematics.
Problem-solving teaches students to think, and it teaches them to think independently. The idea of formulating, what do I need to do in order to reach an end goal, how do I work with the people around me to get to that end goal, it goes through all areas of
So students have this idea that math cannot be used outside the classroom. The revision to the standards, to me, has changed that. We involve the real-world concepts, like ratio and proportion, so simple interest, purchasing things in a store.
When deciding what real-world problems I choose in my class, I have to be very cautious of the culture I have in my classroom and the interests of my students, so if I come up with this great problem, but the students have no idea the background of the problem, that real-world problem will actually get in the way of them understanding the mathematics.
It's necessary to consider all the different populations that you have in a classroom in order to bring in different real-world situations where all children find them approachable.
Because you can create a real-world problem, but if it's not relevant to the student, it truly is not a real-world problem to them.
To see students later in life, and to see what they've accomplished, and they, they call back and say, "I'm in college," or you see them on the street, and they tell you, "I'm attending this college or this university," I think that's what makes it, makes it all
So, thank you, Steve. So the idea of inserting that video wasn't obviously to hear something other than myself, but really to, to attach meaning to comments that have even been made during this committee or out in public, we're talking about, has, is the test more difficult? And the answer to that is yes. Why? Because we're asking the students to do, to learn in a different manner, to demonstrate their skills in a different manner than we have before. Now, you heard that comment about saying, "Well, we don't, you know, necessarily have to have students memorize their multiplication facts." That's not truly accurate, because you need that, but it's the application of such, and when you apply it to real-world situations, the likelihood students remembering doing that, just like we as human beings, the more we attach some new learning to something we actually find meaningful, the likelihood that we'll retain it longer. And Revere is a good example, you saw the Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent, I believe, that I've actually collaborated with her on multiple projects, one, about school works, what does that look like when they actually went through the process? Two, they actually implement MAP, and MAP Growth, so it's sort of a like-sister school system, and just recently, a week or so ago, Kristen Keenan from the high school visited them about their scheduling of an I block. I don't want to say a study hall block, but a structured learning block, is what's going on in other places, trying to collaborate with other entities, looking beyond us, saying, "What works and what doesn't work?" So again, the test is more difficult, because it's asking our students to think differently and apply their knowledge differently. So a good example would be, is the Taunton High School, they revised, from the preliminary numbers to the final numbers, Taunton High School, some of the subgroups, because when the state went back and did an analysis of the legacy test with the new generation test, they realized it didn't jive correctly, and that the actual number of failures shot through the roof, they went back and revisited, and as a result of that, a number of our students ended up meeting or partially meeting expectations, which again, raised our performance level at the high school, which was very meaningful for us. What's important to note is this, we have to keep leaning forward, because there's no guarantees that that'll happen next year. So we want to actually improve based upon hard work and proven systems, rather than an alteration of a mathematical formula at the state level. So we have some highlights here of some clear successes within the district, although all the schools showed movement towards positivity, there are some that actually are more clear to understand and see. So here you have East Taunton in third and fourth grade math performances, so on the left is the third grade. So on the left is the third grade, on the right is fourth grade. And you will notice that East Taunton's third-grade math exceeding expectations, East Taunton students, 14%, the state was nine. Partially meeting, East Taunton, 41, the state, 40. So obviously, some positive growth there. On the fourth grade, we had exceeding expectations, East Taunton, nine, for the state, eight. Not-meeting or failure rate, East Taunton, is six, with 13, the state. Galligan School, which I'll have Annabelle Jones come up in a minute and talk a little bit about, actually, and what's noticing about Galligan, is in third grade, not-meeting expectations, five at Galligan, at the state, 12. Partially meeting, state, 41. Galligan, 55. So I'm going to have Ms. Jones come up here and talk about what exactly is going on in math at Galligan, which I can tell you is being replicated in other buildings as well. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Barata. Good evening, everyone, with Mayor Hoy, school committee members, Mr. Cabral, Happy Bosses' Day. So I'm very excited to be here, and I'm actually really excited to see that my sister school, East Taunton, is here as well, because we collaborate very well together, our coaches, the principal, you know, obviously, and myself, we work really hard together. So I'm happy to see the results that we're seeing. And basically, what we've done is exactly what the video showed. It's not just teaching factual information to students, it's just not enough. We have to teach students to be mathematical thinkers, or just thinkers in general. I know a few years ago, we started using some of the exemplars, which is like these, like rigorous word problems that students have to, you know, work in groups to figure out, and they are rigorous. And I know that we've been working on it, and you know, teachers have gotten PD, and they're doing a nice job of like, helping students solve problems. But last year, Ms. Rogers, Tina Rogers, a district coordinator for math, worked with East Taunton about like, going a little deeper with the exemplars, and not just looking at solving the problems, but actually looking at like, calibrating like, the rubrics and how teachers are grading students. Are they, is it just surface level? Or are they really like, showing their work and demonstrating a deep understanding of the math that is involved in solving these rigorous problems? So I'm happy to report, after, you know, talking with Mrs. Hoy, that I of course got Mrs. Rogers to come over to my school, and now we're doing a similar PD for our staff members. So she's in year two now, with Ms. Rogers, and I'm in year one, but it's exciting, because again, she's already seen some of the results, I think, directly of that work that they've done together. So I'm hoping that my data will show a little bit of an increase as well. But I think that's, again, that's the most crucial part, is focusing on like, having students really be deep thinkers, understanding like, what exactly, what is the problem that I'm being asked to solve? And then, what are the steps? And can I, you know, can I prove, am I able to talk to a teacher? Can I explain it or demonstrate it in writing, what my steps were for solving the problem? And if they're able to do that, that's when we know that a child that can explain their thinking in writing, like, they have a deep understanding. And that's where we are in math.
Thank you. And it's really important, it goes to the credit of this committee, of not only creating those positions, K through seven curriculum coordinators, but also supporting the work of coaches, because we know that standalone PD really only produces probably a 40% success rate into classrooms, but when you implement coaching, which we have the model of, which really, when I attend conferences, and they're envious that we have a coaching model in Taunton, the success rate of that implementation of those practices, of embedded coaching, goes up to 90%. So we do know that that embedded PD, where it's actually before-school, visiting classrooms, providing meaningful feedback, increases the likelihood that our students will be successful, because the teachers are adopting those best practices, and they're very reflective. And Hopewell, and we can't leave Hopewell not acknowledging them, with their fourth-grade, I'm sorry, third-grade mathematics, exceeding expectations, 11% versus the state at nine, zero not-meeting expectations, where the state is 13, and obviously, outpacing the state with the partially meeting and meeting expectations. So again, great work at Hopewell. Again, all that work is being replicated in the other buildings as well. Now we have the English Language Arts, which Hopewell, again, did very well, third and fourth grade. Third grade, zero percentage not-meeting expectations versus the state at eight. Partially meeting, I'm sorry, meeting expectations, 58% versus the state at 46. Fourth grade, although they did not outpace the state in exceeding expectations, they're not-meeting expectations at Hopewell, 4% versus the state at nine, which is a good thing. And then, partially meeting, 61, where the state was 39. So again, a shifting, moving from that not-meeting expectations, more towards partially meeting and meeting. And again, I'll have Ms. Jones come back up again to talk about the Galligan experience of what is going on in the ELA domain in terms of reading, and most importantly, writing.
So this is the part that I'm really excited about, because literacy is my background. And again, I'm just excited, because I know, three years ago, when I, actually, five years ago, when I went over to Galligan, we were looking at our data, and what became apparent to me at the time, and actually, my instructional coach, who, anyone who's been at our building knows and has seen many of our presentations, and you see the passion that we have for what we do. And the exciting part, or the part that was evident to us, was the writing. The writing seemed to be an area that we just were not getting the points that we should. And it's kind of an interesting story, because Sarah Buckley, I know she's here tonight, and I remember, three years ago, we were at an all-admin meeting, and she made a comment to the effect of something about like, she was, you know, worried about the high schoolers' writing, as they were coming to the high school in ninth grade, that, you know, they really were not, didn't seem to be, you know, strong writers. And like, that spoke to me. I actually emailed her later that day and said, you know, I know exactly what you mean, like, it's one of the things that I'm noticing is a struggle at our school, I want to address it. I actually saw her later at a grocery store, and she and I at Trukey's were like, talking about writing in one of the aisles. But that's, this is the work that we, for three years now, and then, thank goodness, I'm so happy that the district has come on board and has worked like tirelessly, the coaches, some of the principals, I know many members, to create this writing scope and sequence, that I think has started to show improvement in our data, and I think it's only going to get better. But basically, it's, we're moving towards like, a writer's workshop model, which is nothing new. It's been around for a long, a lot of times, it's not a program, it's just really great teaching practices for writing. So this is one of the areas where, like in math, you might be like, what is going on? I don't understand this math. The writing is not like that. It's basically good old, not old, but good writing tactics that help students. So the reason I really like it, and again, there's a lot of PD involved, you have to support the teachers, because it can be a little overwhelming. The writing, it's not a program, it's not like you just, there's a book, you follow it, you teach this, and students will be strong writers. It's really looking at what student, looking at student writing, it's looking at what they can do, and then targeting what they're lacking, and providing instruction, mini-lessons, craft lessons, and moving them forward. So it's not necessarily all and always in whole group. It might have, it might be some lessons in whole group, because there are some skills an entire classroom might need. But for the most part, it's actually looking at what groups of students, what can they do, what do they lack, what do we need to move them forward? And it's then, again, small group instruction, targeting those skills, it uses like, authentic mentor texts, students are able, they, first of all, the feedback from teachers is crucial, because again, it's just doing more writing, doing more writing is not going to improve writing. It's doing writing, it's, the teacher gives you feedback about what you did well, what needs to be improved, and then, again, getting to practice that skill and moving forward. So it is, it can be overwhelming, but again, if done well, if supported, we have seen great writing. The other piece that I want to say I'm excited about, and this, you know, when the first year, this was a gradual thing, and for me, writing needed to occur right at kindergarten. You can't target in third grade, or fourth grade, or whatever years that students are being tested. It's, you can't. It has to start in kindergarten. So we started slowly at my, at our, my school, that's what I can speak for, although I know all the other schools are similar. And it was just, at that time, it was just increasing writing. Make sure that there's writing, I want to see lesson plans that show you have writing in your schedule. So that was year one, and then that was successful. And students, and the other thing that I always, in the back of my head, is like, please do not kill the joy of writing for students. So be, you know, be careful of what you're doing, because we don't want, and I know the error of test-taking, that sometimes can happen. So in some of our upper grades, the second year, we saw a little bit of that. Some students, like, really did not love writing, it was like, a lot of like, responding to test questions, it's going back and finding evidence, which is an important skill, but it was like, for them, it killed the joy of writing. So three years, okay, third year, all right, we have to bring the joy of writing back. Like, we can't, it can't be all about testing, students don't love that. That's where the writer's workshop model came, that's when we started doing PD, and that's where I'm finally starting to see the results. Children are enjoying writing. I've had classroom teachers report that even in kindergarten, or in grade one, in grade four, if writing is not on their agenda, students like, question it. And they're like, why, where's writing? Well, I want to work on my story, I need to finish my story from yesterday. So that's the part that excites me. There's a lot of, there's many pieces that go into the writer's workshop, it's just not, you know, you write a story about whatever you want. There's a lot of choice, but there's voice involved, there's, you know, the purpose of an audience, there's many, you know, parts or entities that go into it. And the most exciting part, it's sort of what the video was saying, it's not about, it's not necessarily targeting the writer, your, the ultimate goal is to create writers. And that's the piece that I think that we need to keep in mind. So I'm hoping that Mrs. Buckley is going to see much improved in the years to come. I know we've seen it at our school already, each year, teachers report that students are coming in with better skills, and that's because, again, we're all targeting, you know, it looks differently at every grade level in every classroom, but we're creating those writers. So I'm excited about the work that we're doing, that scope and sequence that the district has developed, and they've worked very hard on, I think is just the beginning of like, great things to come. And it gives us a great resource. If anybody's not sure, like, oh, what, you know, what are first graders supposed to be doing at the end, or what do second graders, you know, what can they do? That gives us a really great resource of what children at each of the grade levels should be able to do. And again, even if they can't make the benchmark, the goal is, well, we met them at where they were, and we moved them a little bit further along. So I'm excited, and I thank you for your time. I know that some of you that have been to Galligan have seen our writing work, and if you come this year, I promise you're going to see writing again, because we're not done. So I just said, I'm excited to talk about it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Again, passionate about writing, and it's obviously, the district is taken to heart about writing is very important, is the end product of synthesizing a whole bunch of information to produce writers, who can do so in a very coherent and cohesive manner of articulating what they have learned. So now let's focus a little bit on the high school, because obviously, they did yeoman's work last year, moving again out of one of those schools targeted for intervention or supports, versus where they are now. Taunton High School, eighth grade. Again, your targets are set year to year by the prior year's performance. So this first slide represents, on the top, ELA, down below is math, non-high school, which means eighth grade. So looking at the top, ELA, grade eight, looking at all students, improved but below target. Lowest performing students, that's, no matter what school you are in the Commonwealth, the state always designates the lowest quartile of students as being lowest performing. If you're in a certain town, for example, Wellesley or Lexington, even those schools will have identified the lowest performing students. It basically says from the state, no student will escape, no school will escape, raising all student performance. So you look at the students at eighth grade at Taunton High School, improved below target, improved below target, lowest performing, high needs, improved below target, economically disadvantaged, improved below target. EL and former EL students exceeded targets. Met targets for students with disabilities. Met targets for African-American students. Exceeded targets for Hispanic and Latinos. White students met their target. Again, if you look at the change, percentage of change, doesn't look as drastic, but it's improvement nonetheless. Again, looking at the right-hand column, next to right-hand column, the points accrued, you have twos, threes, and fours. And we're thankful to see no zeros. Down below, mathematics. Somewhat of a little of a mixed bag, but again, majority are improved but below targets. All students improved but below target. Lowest performing students met targets. Our high-need students improved but below targets. No change for economically disadvantaged, improved but below target for EL and former EL students. Students with disabilities improved but below target. Improved but below target for African-Americans. Met our targets for Hispanics and Latinos. Met targets for whites. So that's ELA, math. Eighth grade, science. All students met targets. Lowest performing, again, that percentile, we didn't have enough students that fit that category. High needs, met our targets. Economically disadvantaged, met our targets. EL and former EL students exceeded our targets. Improved but below target. Students with disabilities, no change African-American, black. Exceeded targets Hispanic and Latino. Met targets whites. But look at the changes. Up positive, 2.8, 3.1, 7.3 for ELs and former EL students. When you think about that, here you have students who are, I would say, linguistically challenged, right? And that's their former status, how many years they've been moving forward. In science, which is really embedded in the language and terminology, still, right? Exceeding targets, which is phenomenal work. Hispanic and Latino, 8.7. So again, we're seeing great work at the high school level in grade eight, which was always a concern, right? What happens when an eighth grader comes in, and how can we assist them? You know, and again, looking forward, that was about the benefit of this year's plan about how to bring in and set for the positive school culture for the eighth grade, which the high school worked very hard on developing that connection with the students right out of the gate. Taunton High School, 10th grade. Okay, you have ELA on top, mathematics down below, and we have Ms. Buckley here who could talk a second about the ELA, but you see no changes, which again, we'd like to see change, but again, no move one way or another is good, I guess. Decline for lowest performing students. Decline for ELs and former EL students in 10th grade. Improved targets for Hispanic and Latino. We met our targets for the whites. Mathematics, high school, every category of student exceeded. Changes, 4.8, 7.5, 18% ELs and former ELs. 12.1% students with disabilities. 10.5 African-American and black students. So again, you look at the great growth in the area of mathematics, obviously, some work to be done with ELA, but I may ask our curriculum supervisor, Sarah Buckley, to come up forward and actually talk about what's going on in the ELA domain at the high school level. Ms. Buckley?
Good evening, everyone. So yes, according to the scores, it looks like our scores have dipped last year in grade 10. And if you haven't been aware of, grade 10 last year was the first year that our students took the Next Generation MCAS, which is a very different type of MCAS than the Legacy. So in the past, grade 10 would write a long composition on the first day, they would have to be required to think about a book and write about a character who made a decision or perhaps had a consequence within the book. And now the MCAS has shifted drastically, it's asking our students to really think critically, which I think has been an overarching theme of tonight, and to actually be proficient writers. So I don't know if any of you have had a chance to actually look at the new MCAS online for grade 10. The first writing prompt that the students were asked to write about, they were required to read three different reading selections, one from Rebecca, one from Dracula, and one from, I believe it was Station 11. They were asked to identify sensory details from three different selections, and then write about the mood of those pieces. So I don't know about any of you, but if I know if I gave you that prompt I put in front of you tonight, that would be a very challenging task, and we're all educated adults at the table. So I love what Principal Jones said before regarding writing, doing more writing in the classroom is not going to make our students better writers. I'm not a very good cook, I try really hard. I can try to make mashed potatoes from scratch, and I fail every single time. So unless someone teaches me how to make mashed potatoes, I'm not going to become better at making them. So our students really need explicit writing instruction, and I think it goes back to the work that we've done with Chris Barata and all the principals, making sure that we're seeing a scope and sequence with writing from pre- we're seeing a scope and sequence with writing from pre-K through 12, so we can identify students and the skills that they need to be successful as they move through the grades. A very, I think it's called the DSE Writing in Action Project. It's on the Massachusetts website. It shows us as a district what we need and what we're looking for in good writing for grades pre-K through 12. So that's a resource I know that I've mentioned before to Chris and talked to some principals about. But I think we need to really wrap our head around the skills that we need our students to have as they progress through the grades and really support them as they come across a test, which is a graduate, we need our students to graduate from Taunton High School. I know this year, I was very disappointed in our results, but I think we're really moving forward in the right direction with some decisions, what we've made with writing at the high school level and with the middle schools. So I'm hopeful that I will be up here hopefully next year and be able to see some accolades as well as the progress of our students. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. As difficult it is for, for a curriculum supervisor saying disappointed, that's okay because that means if the status quo isn't acceptable, then we're going to work harder. So actually, I have to compliment and count out, although Ms. Buckley mentioned myself, there's a lot of hard-working people from the teachers in the classrooms, the coaches, the curriculum coordinators. Tina Rogers was mentioned earlier about the math. Becky Coet for the ELA and Humanities. And obviously, the curriculum supervisors at the high school, and obviously, the principals who support the work in the buildings are the ones who are really working hard to bring this to fruition. Again, writing is not going to go away. And this is something we're going to major focus on, is improving our writing skills of our students. Science, actually, we look at some of the performance there in grade 10. No change for all students, but the lowest performing met the targets. High needs, met targets. Economically disadvantaged, improved but below target. Met targets for students with disabilities. Declined a bit African-American. Met targets for Hispanic-Latino. Improved below targets white. Again, but looking at the percentage of changes, you have 3.7, 3.3. A little bit of a mixed bag. However, I will say then, in looking back at prior years, again, this is the first year, this is the Next Generation testing, we're in, we're moving in the right direction. And I'll only say that, but I want to have Liz Palowski, our K7 and science coordinator and former science coordinator supervisor at the high school, come up and actually talk about what's going on in the science domain. So Liz?
Good evening, everyone. So I'm really excited because the eighth grade scores, we've been, it's kind of like Christmas for me. So several years ago, we went through the curriculum revision, and some people joined me in that endeavor in 2013 and 14. We, we were looking at the eighth grade scores, and we thought, how are we going to address the fact that the eighth grade test is, is actually one-third content from sixth grade, one-third from seventh, and one-third from eighth? And so this test, it's like, like I said, Christmas. This is the first test that actually we can see all of the work we did during that time, modifying the content and the practices that we employ in our classrooms for our students. Actually, we can actually, it works. It went up. And so I'm really excited, but as Mr. Barata said, good is not good enough, and we're going to work a little harder. So now we know that the content and the practices in place are working. It's time to really think about how we teach science. So the nation, not just Taunton, is really struggling now to, how do you teach a bunch of students to be ready, to be the innovators of the, of the future? We have no idea what's ahead of us. And so this adaptive challenge, we're learning it's best to sort of model that for our students when we teach. So over the next few years, we're hoping through embedded coaching to shift instructional practices in the classroom. For example, we are piloting an open resource curriculum in seventh and eighth grade, a few of the classrooms. It's, it's a national program. And what it does is it presents students with a problem, and they have no idea how to address it. This girl is sick, and they have some data. And it uncovers their misconceptions, it uncovers their knowledge, and the teacher will piece that apart and kind of put it back together again, so the students are learning the frameworks, but discovering what different, discovering different pieces and writing about it. We're going to let go of writing lab reports because nobody, except if you're in a lab, no STEM career, are you writing a lab report. But you are arguing. And so we're going to, we're embedding more argumentative tasks. You are explaining, so we are going to embed more expository writing. That's the real, that's real science at this point. So that, this is, this is an exciting shift for us. For example, so today, I taught a class to fourth-grade teachers about engineering, and it was electricity. And we were talking about how we used to teach electricity, and one of the teachers said, oh, yeah, I remember. We used to give them a picture of the circuit and then give the kids the parts, and then they would put it together. And then I'd give them a little quiz when they'd label everything. And I was, I said, please don't ever do that. I said, what we're doing now is we're going to, we gave, we're going to give kids a bag of stuff and say, let's make that light bulb work. And that, that struggle that they feel, that, that builds perseverance. That's what we want in our students. Maybe they're not going to memorize every part of the cell or all the different types of natural hazards that exist, but they will know how to look at a problem, think about it, believe them themselves, because in front of their teacher, they struggled, they failed, and they were able to persevere. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palowski. The next slide shows, I know Superintendent Cabral, couple of school committee meetings ago, or maybe the last one, talked about where we are in terms of gateway cities. And if you notice on the left, that's the urban district comparison of the 24, I guess you'd say, gateway cities. And on the right, 10th grade math. And if you look at where Taunton is, and those are the circled areas, I'm sorry, you look at, and this chart was set aside or built on those not meeting expectations or what you call about failure rates. And if you notice on the left-hand side, which is 10th grade ELA, Taunton, hold on a second, please. Taunton was sixth out of the 24 gateway cities, and the fewest failures or not meeting expectations. And on the math side, eighth compared to other gateway cities. Because there's some ties in there that factor into that. There's also should be noted that you have some communities like, by basically pupil expenditure. And then you'll notice some that spend much more than Taunton does and didn't do as quite well as we have. You know, when you top out at Cambridge, it's almost $25,000 per student. And then you look at our, right, our pupil, per pupil expenditure. We're, we're working very hard. We're doing well, supported this committee, and obviously, teachers and staff pushing and challenging our students. So again, that's just a graphic of where we fit in terms of the gateway cities across the state. Next steps, and I'll probably have Ms. Buckley and Ms. Palowski come back up here again and maybe even Ms. Jones. What's going on with the next steps? As we heard earlier, we've implemented Study Sync as a curriculum resource for grades six through 12. And I will have Ms. Buckley up in a moment and speak to that. Writers Workshop, which we talked about earlier, about that mindset about writing and producing writers versus making students just writing tasks. The Extended Pilot of Wonders, which is 2017 with the 220 edition, will roll out in January. Again, that goes back to working smarter, not harder. Again, taking advantage of the resources that the state provides with curate and ed reports. When we additionally, originally piloted Wonders 2017, they were not brought through the curate process yet. When we were moving towards our staff members in the district thinking that that's the way to go, Superintendent Cabral put a pause on that and said, we need more information. Again, Mr. Cabral met with the representatives from McGraw-Hill. We discussed the matter. We've learned about the 220 edition, which does address those weaknesses that showed up in the original curate report. So we look forward to professional development rolling out in November and then kicking off fully in January and beyond of rolling out the 220 series of wonders. Writing across all disciplines at Taunton High School, I'll let Ms. Buckley speak to that. Ongoing targeted support via the curriculum coordinators and coaches for ELA math in grades K through seven. We have a math consultant in the district or consultants working at Mulcahy and Taunton High School. Those positions are that, our ability to access them was based upon the grant money that we received from the state. Ongoing science curriculum coordinator support, K through seven. I'll have Ms. Palowski come up and talk about the engineering. Project Lead the Way, which was a question earlier. Previous school committee meeting about what is Project Lead the Way? Invention convention. Use of assessments. Map growth assessment tool and teacher-generated assessments. So I'll speak a little bit, I'll back up a little bit when Ms. Buckley was up here talking about, you know, that eighth grade writing test, writing questions, pulling in multiple tests. When we looked at our district assessments created by teachers, we realized we had to ramp that up in rigor, with rigor. So in a way, we might have been failing a bit because we were setting it up for a test that was demanding, much more demanding than what we offered on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis. So that process is ongoing of updating our assessments in district to match the quality of rigor that the state is going to demand from our students. Both coordinators, we're going to talk about the building better bridges, building K through 12 coherence. And obviously, we have continued support from the statewide system of support, and that also takes into account the review of data of central office, where we're looking at all our resources and how we allocate them properly, not only the schools that need targeted support, but we can't forget all the remaining buildings in the district and the establishment of instructional leadership teams in every building. So if I could have Ms. Buckley, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Palowski come up here and speak to certain points. They come up, please.
So I'm excited about, of course, the writing and the wonders. I know, I believe that they've changed, like the, they haven't necessarily changed the stories, is my understanding, they just changed the way they actually, the order that they're in. And I believe, if I understood it correctly, it's actually, they did a better job so that it actually aligns with writing as well. So that like when students are reading about nonfiction or expository pieces, they're going to, there's a writing piece that can go along that also supports that, which, which makes total sense. If you're, you know, reading narratives and writing narratives, you're going to understand it better, deeper. So I'm excited about that. I'm excited that, to see writing across curriculum. Because again, one of the, one of our worst enemies, talking about the enemies, is time. There's just not enough time in the day at elementary to cover all the subject area, have the recess, have lunch, have all these extra things that we have going on that are very important. And then, oh, by the way, you have to also add 40 minutes of writing every day. It's impossible. So the only way that we can do this is, is like Mr. Barata said, we have to be smarter about what we do. Reading is not just in the reading literacy block. You know, social studies can be embedded into the literacy block. So can't science. Math has writing. So it's just, again, it's looking at writing across all the disciplines. And I think that's, once we start seeing it this way, we're going to have more success and teachers are going to be less frustrated about the time, I can't get to this, I can't get to that. So that's my hope. Oh, the ILTs is the other piece that I'm excited about. I know that in my, in our building, one of the things that we saw, and Ms. Barata touched upon briefly, was rigor. Teacher tables, magnificent. You know, teachers work hard, they know their students, they know what they need to teach, what the target. But again, small group instruction is best, and they, you know, those small groups, 20 minutes, it's quick. So students do spend a lot of time at centers and working in collaborative stations. So that's been our focus, and what is going on at those collaborative stations? Are students really on task most of the time or just half the time? Because that means half the time is, is wasted, and we can't have that. We don't have, we don't want any students wasting any time. The collaborative centers, one of the things that I, even myself, as I'm going into classrooms doing observations with teachers, that's my focus this year. That came out of my ILT. So I, all my staff know, I know you've, I've been here for five years, you are amazing at teacher tables. I've told you over, I've given you, you know, little pointers, but now I'm going to be your lens for what's happening at centers. You're focusing on what's going on at teacher table, but I can let you know, like, oh, you know, this, this, you know, great lesson that you planned or this great center you had, you know, students were working, it was supposed to be collaborative, but guess what? Nobody was talking during that entire time. So that's, that's a missing piece that's crucial because we're not going to create thinkers by students sitting there doing skills work in isolation. So that's the piece that I'm hoping that we can, with, and again, I love the ILT because it's not just myself, it's not just my coach or, you know, the, the leadership team. It's, teachers are on that committee. There's, everybody has a vested interest, and everybody has a voice at the table. Because, let's be honest, I can have this wonderful vision, but if my teachers don't buy in to what I want to do or what we want to do, change is not going to happen. Teachers are, there's, all the research in the world shows, it doesn't matter the program that you buy, it doesn't matter the resources available. It's the teacher that makes the difference. So the teachers have to have the passion. The resources, of course, are wonderful and important, but they have to have the passion and, and know-how to how to help students. And that's the only way that we're going to affect change, and I'm excited that we're starting to look at that. We are focusing on like individual students, where are gaps? And okay, it's, it's second grade, but guess what? If that child is at working at second grade level and you don't target the gaps that he or she has, doesn't matter what grade you're, what level you're teaching, they're not going to get out of it what you want. So that's the part that I'm excited about. We're individualizing instruction and really focusing on what students need and providing that, in however format that might look. And that's, again, it's very different in classrooms, but it's, it's the work that I think it needed to be done, and we're starting to do it. And it's just, again, I'm very excited and passionate about what we do here in Taunton. So thank you.
Hello again. So actually, I want to thank you first of all for supporting our adoption of Study Sync at Taunton High School. Last year, we piloted several curriculum materials at the high school to see what would best, what would be best in our classrooms to really start to examine multiple texts. And I've been in the district, I think, since 2003, and this was the first time that we actually had purchased new curriculum materials for the high school. So thank you again for your support with making sure that our students get what they need at the high school level. Study Sync, I don't know how much you know about this program, but it's an online curriculum platform, and it examines curriculum in a very different way. We have for every unit what we call an anchor text. So an anchor text might be, let's say, To Kill a Mockingbird. And instead of just reading a text in its entirety, throughout the text, you stop and you examine that text through a different lens. So there might be a poem that you examine a particular chapter of the text with, or there might be a short story in which you examine a particular chapter of the text with. So instead of reading a novel in its entirety and having a writing prompt at the end of the unit, kids are continuously writing as they read a unit. It's a new way of looking at curriculum, and I think it gives our, it gives our students an opportunity to look at a variety of genres and gives them opportunity to write a variety of different types of writing tasks. So I know sometimes we'd only focus on an argument task at the end of a unit. Throughout the unit, we're giving kids an opportunity to practice in what I'm calling low-risk writing assessments. So it's an opportunity as a teacher to see like what struggles are my students having with this particular task. Writing an argument is very different than writing an expository, which is different than writing a narrative, which is different than writing a letter, which is a type of narrative. So writing is a very complicated, complex skill. It's not something easy. So throughout each unit, students are continuously given the opportunity to practice writing a particular type of writing task. And then at the end of every unit, they're given the opportunity to practice that skill through the lens of multiple texts. So again, I'm not just looking at an excerpt of one selection, I'm looking at the excerpts of three different selections, which is what, again, the MCAS wants our students to be able to do. And it's also online. So teachers are very excited to actually have a resource that helps with that. Because I know a lot of times as teachers, it's overwhelming to make sure we're providing that rigor in a classroom, to making sure we're writing the right types of writing prompts. And there are people who obviously have been paid, have, you know, received training to write, writing prompts and to write, writing tasks that are aligned to specific skills. So I know as a teacher myself, that I appreciate when I can look at something and make sure I adopt whatever I'm doing in the classroom, but it's going to target specific skills that I know my students need to be successful. So Study Sync is awesome. My teachers are loving it. I know the district teachers are excited about it, and it's very powerful to have an exciting new tool that teachers are excited to use, and our students are excited to use. So thank you very much for that, for adopting that with us and for supporting us in that endeavor. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the writing at the high school, which Mr. Barata mentioned before. Under Chris and Keenan's leadership, I'm working with her to identify throughout all curriculum areas a writing task, so that way writing is not just seen as an ELA problem. Because I know a lot of times when we look at writing, people look at the English department and saying, okay, well, work on that, fix it. And writing is a task and a skill that should be supported in every curriculum area, whether you are a scientist, as Liz mentioned before, in math classes. Every single teacher has gone to college, and every single teacher can support a writing initiative within their classroom. So I know we're supporting teachers at the high school level to make sure they have the skills necessary to support writing within their classrooms, and I know because of that fact, that writing scores are going to continue to improve at Taunton High School. Students are not just seeing, again, as English teachers' responsibilities for writing, it's all of our responsibilities, they're all of our students. So I'm really excited for that as well, and I look forward to sharing with you the results of that endeavor. Thank you.
Hello again. I'm really excited to talk a little bit about engineering, which is something that, since I started here in two thousand and one, we've had a hard time kind of really embedding authentically into the curriculum. So in third and fourth grade, we have a world-class curriculum that, that was written by the Museum of Science that we're implementing in every single classroom, and it is the Engineering's Elementary Program. In third grade, it is, the standards include magnetism, so in this, as part of the program, the students will explore magnets, which they always have done. But now, they'll read a story about a little boy, so this fits into the literacy block, as discussed, who wants to build a floating train to help his father at his toy store. The students read that, there's comprehension questions involved, there's lots of discussion, and then, then they use the materials to design a track. And so the students, it's actually really hard, I tried to build it, it takes some time. So the students really learn to struggle through and solve a problem. In the fourth grade, as part of the electricity unit, the students are helping a little girl build an alarm, so when she feeds, so she knows when to feed her animals. It's a story, that's a very familiar type of teaching for elementary teachers, and it's a familiar way for students to engage, and they're practicing engineering. So it's very exciting. We also introduced Project Lead the Way, which is a very, very exciting program to have in our middle schools. It's part of their specials, and what this particular type, version of Project Lead the Way does is, it's, it's actually giving students additional engineering. So we're going to have students in a few years who's had engineering from third through seventh grade. So every student at Friedman and Martin is, they come into class, the first day, they're learning about cerebral palsy, they're learning a little bit about engineering, but more, like, wow, I really want to, they're getting that desire to help these people with cerebral palsy, and their first assignment is to design this orthopedic shoe to help someone whose foot is sort of at this angle walk flat foot. So it's, and the students have the freedom to use whatever materials they want to design this. The excitement in the room is incredible, from fifth through seventh grade. And then they learn about modeling and schematics and throughout the rest of the unit, and that's every, every grade level has that from five to seven. We'll introduce a new curriculum next, next year, and then another one the third year. So every year, there'll be a different curriculum, where students will be engaging in a different type of engineering. And we're actually embedding writing tasks at the end of each of these as a type of assessment. So students are able to continue to practice communicating and writing across all subjects. And we also are, have the opportunity, with the Project Lead the Way, to introduce a program, we're thinking about it, that, at Parker Middle School, this career exploration through the social studies classes. So we're leveraging the relationships we're building in, through Project Lead the Way, and we're really excited about that. And of course, we have the Science Fair, which is our longstanding tradition, and the Invention Convention at the younger grades. We've moved that out into mid-March this year, instead of right after Christmas, so the students have more time to work in classrooms with teachers on brainstorming, developing prototypes, and presenting to one another. So, and I just wanted to quickly discuss building better, building, this is a mouthful, better bridges. We've found the need as curriculum supervisors and coordinators to really talk to each other about what we're doing, and so we've, we, we decided to meet monthly and really align our visions, align our practices, so that what is happening K through seven is continuing in, in, in the high school, and also what is necessary at the high school, we're, we're working on from K to seven. So we've only met a couple, I mean, it's only October, we've only met a couple times, but we've, it's a really high-energy group, and we're really, really excited about it.
So the idea of building better bridges is that we don't have the structure of K-12 in all areas, but that doesn't mean we're confined by that, and that's why the yeomans work about meeting, actually discussing, looking at that K-12 articulation. We've talked a lot, said a lot, you may have questions, so I guess we'll end on this side.
Thank you. First, I have Mr. Souza, and then Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of meat and potatoes in this one. I know I talked to Mr. Barata and Superintendent about this report, and last year, we budgeted some, budget cycles coming up again, so we budgeted some money for Studiesync, so that's good that it's paying dividends. And of course, with, we just, with two years of data, I'm excited about the next, the next year, with three years of data, seeing that the successes that we have had build upon, build upon them. And, and one of the things I asked Mr. Barata before the meeting was about individualized instruction, because there are areas where writing could improve. And I, and I said to him, you know, one of the questions is going to be, how do you individualize? And I think Bella, I think Bella was right on the target on that one. So we needed to hear that, because that's the most important thing. If a, if a parent asks, how, how does it affect my student? This is, you know, the next steps are great, but let's get down and break it right down to Mary and E-Pole and Room, whatever it may be, and how does it affect them? How can we get that individualized? And unfortunately, with funds the way they are, we've had to have laser, you have had laser focus on, on certain items, because that's what we have to laser focus on. We, you don't have a broad focus, we have a laser focus, because that's where we have to target. And, and there's, there are successes that are paying off, and, and it's, it's a great thing. But writing is, well, writing will continue to improve, and kudos to the, to the, to the writers. Certainly not my strength, and anyone knows that, I wish that they built engineering and writing in together, but I guess I'm a better engineer than a writer, but. And my final thought goes to the story of Liz talking about the electronic kit, and talking about the new way of doing things. I had an opportunity about twenty years ago to meet Bert Rutan, and anyone that knows engineering knows that Bert Rutan is the guy that does, that built scale composites from scratch. It's a, it's an aircraft manufacturer. And I had a talk with Bert, and I said, and one of the conversations during the seminar was, and after I talked to him privately, was, you know, tell me about your engineers, how do you hire your engineers? He says, the best engineers that I hire are the ones that are not afraid to fail. He says, because they learn from their mistakes, they become, they build, it builds character, and they're able to solve problems quicker and faster, and those are the engineers that I hire. So just a little tidbit on that, I think we're right on money on that. So, thank you, thank you everyone, and thank you, Mr. Barata. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Barata, thank you and your team for the input. So we certainly have a lot of data statistics in front of us, and the folks at home also were brought to, up to par with these statistics. I'm just a meat and potatoes kind of guy. So basically, how, how can we, as a school committee, help writing, critical thinking? I mean, I'm putting on my university hat now, academic achievement center, writing centers. I mean, what does it take, and of course, this is open to Ms. Buckley, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Paulski, what does it take to make our students proficient, more proficient in writing? Because as we know, it's across every discipline, and we, as a school committee, I think, need to help in any way, and what is the magic wand that we need to wave? Can anybody share that with us?
Well, I'll be, I'll be happy to jump in real quick. If, if, especially in regards to writing, if there was a magic wand, we would have found it, and we would be doing it. So that's the tricky part about writing. There is, there are some programs out there, but there, and we've looked at some of them. I myself personally have gone to schools and seen them, and guess what? Not one program is ever going to address the needs of all the students. So what we have to do, and this is how you can support us, if you don't mind, is we have to provide those opportunities for teachers to learn about these programs, to see how they're utilized, but a good teacher will pull the pieces from the different programs, knows that child, knows what they need, and that's what they'll give them. So that's, that, that's the tough part. There's no magic, it's just, it's knowing good teaching practice, it's having great resources available, it's knowing your students, and then targeting, what do they know, and what am I, where am I going to move them? Keep that, keep that ball or that, that movement going, like, no one's ever done learning. I learn something every day, we all do, and that's the, the value we want to instill in students. We, we're never, even if you meet your goal, that's wonderful, but guess what? There's more to be done. So I hope that answers your question, I know it's not probably the answer you want.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I, I did hear time element being an issue, so I'm addressing it through the time element. So this program that you're talking about, pulling pieces, so the, the teacher in the classroom doesn't have the time. So how do we support outside of the classroom? And again, we're talking university level, I mean, it may not be as, as, as down to the elementary level, but in a high school, can we have, or does it even exist right now, an academic achievement center or a writing center, that we could have a professional that's there that doesn't impact the time element in the classroom? That's basically, that's the wand I'm, I'm thinking of.
Yeah, I can, I can mention to some of the work that I've been trying to get off the ground and been successful this year with our dual enrollment programs at Bridgewater, oh, actually, BCC right now, where we have forty-three students going to BCC, taking a college-level English course, actually, the work that we want to do with Bridgewater State to replicate the dual enrollment program that they currently have in place in Fall River, so that would be a good opportunity to improve our writing skills. I also think as a board, and I think, I commend the board for their efforts, you know, being educated, becoming educated on to the different processes of different programs, different curriculum that we bring into place. And I want to at least kind of step back a little bit and say, this is just one measure. So I commend this group for the work that we've done around social-emotional learning with our CIT. I commend this group for putting technology in front of our students so they can practice writing on their Chromebooks. So this is, again, one measure, but there's more aspects to creating a whole student and a student who is a good writer than just the writing. So the element of time, I think we've, we're addressing that as a district by embedding writing across the curriculum, so it's not just done during that hundred-and-twenty-minute block, it's done throughout the day, so there's time there. And I know at our high school, we can be creative, we can create, we can work as far as setting up after-school programs for students to work with staff who maybe needed a little additional support with writing. And I'm also looking at virtual programs that students could take in addition to their classes, for students who want to be, want a more rigorous schedule than what they currently have in place, or students who have electives, or students who are participating in community service. Now, there are other ways where we can continue to educate our students and provide them with the extra supports, or just push them, or provide them with more rigor.
I'll set, Mr. DeMello. I'm going to go to Ms. Starry next, then Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just very briefly, thank you very much for the fine presentation, that this is very complex, that every nuance, it seems to me that at least the highlights of those nuances have been explored. We are always asking questions continuously about outcomes and how we are addressing those outcomes. So I have a few takeaways in the midst of all of this information. One is that overall achievement is holding steady, that we are making some significant progress in some of the areas at all grade levels that are being tested, but that we are kind of right in the middle, as you pointed out when you began your presentation, Mr. Barata. That we are, secondly, that we are targeting areas of weakness in all disciplines that are being measured, ELA, mathematics, science, and that writing is a focus of our energy in this instance. That we are, as a district, encouraging collaboration across the district, between and among people at the leadership level, at the middle management level, coaches, classroom teachers, that that collaboration is going on across a school, as Bella has pointed out, in terms of Galligan, assuming that that's going on in other places, and that it is going on across districts as well. That we would certainly benefit by an infusion of better resources. I heard Mr. Barata say that compared to Cambridge, that spends twice as much money per pupil than the Taunton Public Schools, we're, we're pretty much, and, and we're in a large urban area, we're pretty much making progress, and so I was very pleased to hear that. I think that I want to be assured that all of our, all of us, school board, teachers, administrators, et cetera, are on the same page in terms of moving in a positive direction that is identified and defined by what it is that you have explained to us and the process that, progress that you make going forward with professional development, curriculum, et cetera, et cetera. And that we are celebrating the progress. So we sometimes tend to look at the little areas in the bar graphs that show no progress, but we need to be sure that we celebrate even minimal progress across the district, in our schools, and between and among our students. And that, lastly, that we are sharing best practices. I look at East Taunton, and I won't pull this out to belabor the point, but that in those schools, in the particular areas where they are making significant progress, that we are sharing those best practices, so that we can all move together in a single movement forward. So I thank you very much for the hard work, thank our teachers and all of our staff, our leadership team, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Ms. Starry, Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've always been big on the issue of bridging achievement gaps for racial and ethnic minorities, and I notice in a couple of statistics that there's been a little bit of backsliding with black and African-American statistics, but I'm also wondering, I don't know if there's been any measurement of this, if that, that demographic might be shifting a bit, because we are seeing increased immigration from Haiti and from Africa and from other non-English-speaking countries, and are we maybe getting a generation of kids who may be Native American English speakers themselves, but their parents aren't, and that that might be impacting somewhat?
That is actually part of the process that each school undertake. You know, for example, we showed, with much clarity, the high school, and that was part of the promising practices, really drilling down and looking at data. Again, last year, last fall, spring, we had DataWise come in from Harvard, part of the grant of analyzing data and looking at, how do you look at whole school data and drill down a root cause analysis? Now those schools are taking part in data, action, data, data works in action, so it's a second component of now looking at, that, why is it the way it is, Mr. Fiore? So it's actually looking at root causes, is it familial? Is it, is it our need to be more culturally proficient in the instruction that we, that we utilize? Going back to that video where they talked about, you know, relevance in real life for the student's perception of what really is for their real life? So it's actually looking at all those aspects, why is it happening? Is it, is it truly an issue, is it just a one-time deal? So you're looking at a lot of different data and slicing it multiple ways, coming up with hypotheses, and then actually putting those decisions into play to practice what is really going on, to change, to go back to what we said earlier, not be afraid to fail. So if we see a problem, we recognize it, we develop a plan, we put it in place, monitor it, and then choose, were we effective or not, or do we need to change course?
Thank you. I just want to be sure that, that we're on top of that and that we're considering things like that, because I'm sure it's not just a matter of basic abilities, but there, again, that's a demographic that's changing a lot, and I'm, I wonder if we need to be addressing the changes.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, Mr. Fiore, you bring up a good point, and we were just having a quick little sidebar. I think you've heard me state on several occasions how our African-American population has doubled and is above the state average. I believe we went from about eight percent to sixteen percent in about a nine-year period of time, so there has been a shift. Our Hispanic population, Latino population is just below the state average. State average, I believe, is eleven percent, we're right around nine, so we're holding steady. But you're right, the demographics are changing. Last year, Desi sent a team down to analyze the work at the high school, because we have made, under Dr. Hackett's leadership, which I was a part of, but under Dr. Hackett's leadership, they have closed the achievement gap at the, gap at the high school. So part of the work that Mr. Barata will be doing will be to lead, I'll talk about in my report, an implicit bias, see, curric, community input team, to look at our literature, to look at our curriculum, to make sure that it addresses the needs of all our students. And obviously, as a community, as a leadership team, all fifty administrators participated in implicit bias training, and we will continue that work throughout the course of the year, starting on November seventh, when the all-admin team meets again. We will continue, again, that work, which I believe is very important, and just the initiatives we've done as a, as a district to try to grow our own and make sure that we have a diverse teaching force in front of our students. And you've, and again, you've heard me say, I said on opening day when I unpacked my backpack, now, having a Portuguese teacher that I could relate to, to this day, has had a dramatic impact on who I am as a, as a student, as an educator, and as a, as a person. So we know that that all goes into making sure that we are educating all our students, especially as our demographics change.
I'll set, Mr. Fiore. Mr. Martin?
Two quick points. One, I was happy to see that the tenth grade exceeded their targets.
One, I was happy to see that the tenth grade exceeded their targets, areas in, all areas in math, and I'll certainly support the other areas to bring them up to exceeding targets also. The second thing is, if the, if our teachers show the enthusiasm that Ms. Palowski, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Buckley showed this evening, we can't fail. I couldn't keep up with what they were saying. There was no note-taking, believe me.
I took copious notes, Mr. Martin.
You took copious notes? But again, great, great demographic. Enthusiasm is unbelievable. And you too, Mr. Barata. Even though the computer didn't work at first.
But if I could circle back, Mr. D'Amello asked about what the school committee can do. You've already done it. You shined a light on saying, we need to improve math. You shined a light, we need to improve writing. You shined a light about hiring the best possible teachers we can. Case in point, the high school math consultant, who did a couple of weeks of visiting classrooms and talking, came back and said, you know what? We can always improve pedagogy, right, our instructional practices? But Taunton did it right, and you have to give credit to Donna Shavitz and Mr. Maddow for the hiring. You hired some extremely competent, mathematically-thinking individuals. So that's something that comes from this committee about hire the best. Don't settle. Hire the best, recruit, fill our classrooms with the best possible candidates. So the rest of the work has to be ongoing, right? How do we improve our instructional practices? That's something that the great work that these individuals here, those who are, could have been invited, all the coaches, the other curriculum coordinators, Becky, Tina, supervisors at the high school, all can have a share in the success. So circling back to Mr. D'Amello, you've already set the stage for us, because you set our standards high. You don't accept good, you want great. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to add, you know, I'd just like to, you know, dovetail, you know, I see the work firsthand being married to a principle. I think that my wife spends more time on the phone talking to Mrs. Jones than she does talking to me, which is probably preferable to her. But it's, it's a challenge. It's a challenge each day, because our school population at our various schools is very dynamic, it changes each day, you know? It's a socioeconomic difference, it's a language barriers, it's kids with different learning styles. And these schools and these school buildings, and the principals, and our educational coaches and teachers have to adjust on the fly, and they do such a great job with that. And I certainly commend them, and we're starting to see the results on the scores as well. So job well done, let's keep it up and keep the momentum going. Thank you. Now you can clap, Suzie. All right. That was quick. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. So I have a few items in my report that I will discuss, and then a few superintendent talking points that I'll bring you up to speed on. So the first is, I'm just, and I won't go through, I'll just kind of paraphrase. I'm very excited to share with the committee that we will be launching five community input teams that will focus on, this is, that will focus on dual and, dual-language programming. We're gonna go back and revisit our best practices as far as what's working and where we can improve when it comes to pre-K expansion. We are gonna analyze the current state of our therapeutic learning programs and discuss possible new programming to address the diverse needs of our students all the way from pre-K through high school. As I mentioned earlier, Mr. Barata is gonna form, or work on a small community input team that will focus on community bias. And we will continue the work around social emotional learning, where I know Mrs. Perry and her team are very close to making a decision, some recommendations to myself and the school board. So excited about that work, as I know firsthand, having served on the pre-K expansion and having served on the Tiger Cafe renovation. I know that work can be very powerful, can not only impact the school community, but also impact the greater community. So we look forward to getting those kicked off at our kickoff meeting on Monday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. If any school committee member, and I may be reaching out to you if you haven't reached out to me yet, I will be reaching out to school board members if you don't reach me first regarding your participation on some of these CITs, which I feel align with your skill set. And continuing, very, very proud of this work, which aligns with the work we've been doing as a district to create a more diverse workforce, our teacher pipeline. So two of our high school teachers, Gloria Palmer and Maureen Farias. Maureen, very excited, was a former student of mine, so I'm happy that she's part of this. So the Taunton Public Schools are proud to announce that the Taunton, two Taunton High School educators, Gloria Palmer and Maureen Farias, have been selected by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to participate in the Inspired Fellowship Program. So this was competitive, they had to apply, they had to complete an application and submit a short video, and we were one of, I believe, fifteen school districts to have teachers selected for this program. So Inspired Fellows are made up of in-service professionals who are committed to working with the Department of Education to increase the racial and ethnic diversity of the teacher workforce. As part of their work, Inspired Fellows will meet with high school and college students to encourage them to consider teaching. In addition to working with high school and college students, Fellows will host regional groups as part of their outreach work. The program officially launched last Friday, and the program will also include, will also coincide with DESI's new initiative titled Influence One Hundred. So very excited to have two of our own piggyback the work that we've started and to learn from their great work. And a couple of updates on my superintendent talking points. One, you may have noticed on your table what I've been sharing with our students. So TPS amazing students, so when I visit schools and I notice students performing random acts of kindness or just doing something that's exceptional, I will stop and provide a student with a pencil. For example, there was a first grader helping two first graders tie his shoes, or tie their shoes. So stopped the young man, gave him a pencil, and sent them off on his way. So those are just some of the little things that we are doing to show students that we care and to recognize their outstanding achievements. Sorry, I don't have any for this, I don't have TPS amazing school committee members. I'll work on that, but I'll make sure we get some in the future. And part of my ongoing work with our veterans group, we met yesterday. Mr. Jakes is gonna be part of an initiative to create a documentary, learning from our veterans in their service overseas, as well as our current vets. So Mr. Jakes and his team will work on that. And for the upcoming Veterans Day, we have, well, you have in front of you four postcards that Mr. Barata and the high school, Rafferty Gott's department have duplicated for us, that we will send out to all our students, that they will complete, return to us, and we will send them to our veterans serving overseas as a sign of appreciation. So that's just a couple of talking points we wanna, I wanted to share with you there. I am happy to also announce, I survived the Harlem Wizards. I was able to get a five-minute rotation in. I was, I won't tell you how many times I was dunked on, and I won't tell you how many muscles are aching and sore, but I believe we had over eight-hundred-and-seventy people in attendance, so it was a great community event. It was nice to see school committee members there, and it was just overall an outstanding evening. Very, students were very well behaved, the crowd was energetic and engaged. Didn't make any baskets, but I did get two assists and didn't pull any muscles. I just want to give you an update on Crisis Go. So Crisis Go training, right as of now, we have four schools that have completed the training, Friedman, Chamberlain, Taunton High School, and Parker. By this Friday, we will have East Taunton, Martin, Hopewell, Bennett, and Taunton Alternative High School completed. And the last round of training will take place on November thirteenth. E. Pole, Letty, Mulcahy, and Galligan, and then all our schools will be trained, and the app will be up and running and in full use. So thank you to the school committee, and again, for the public to know that was paid for through a grant that we applied for. So it's not costing the school department any additional funds out of our appropriation. And just to let you know, I'm visiting schools. I completed four unannounced observations today at one of our elementary schools. I will be at the Bennett Elementary School this Friday, and I will be at Martin Middle School next on the twenty-fourth. Again, just doing observations, meeting with principals, and best supporting them the way my executive coach supports me, returning the favor or passing on the knowledge that I've learned as far as coaching goes to our principals, to make them well-rounded educators and administrators. That concludes my report.
So motion to, motion made, and second and on discussion, Ms. Starry.
Just a question to, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the superintendent. There's an item on the agenda under new business that's also a community input team update. Do you have additional information to share with us on that item? Or is that the same?
That was the report.
That, that was it, so this, not this item. So then I have a, an observation. The early education for all community input team formed itself some three years ago. I think Mrs. Almeida was on that input team, I was on that input team as well as others, and you were too, Mr. Cabral, actually, and I dug out my old report. It's an extensive report.
I remember, I wrote it.
I attached to that, yeah, you worked on it, you probably wrote it. There was also, at the time, a piece of legislation that was pushed forward around universal pre-K. So I would hate to have the community input team, it is reframed, it will be reframed, but I'd hate to have it start from ground zero. I think that it's important that the hard work of the folks who came together three years ago is recognized, and that the work of the community input team is a stepping-off place from these recommendations. At the end of the day, the recommendations were to expand our pre-K program starting with the two fourth grades at Mulcahy and the third, fourth, uh, fourth grade, four-year-old program at the new Mulcahy. So I'm assuming that it's moving forward from this level. Is that your understanding?
I apologize if I wasn't clear. I thought, I thought I stated in my report that it will be to review the work that we did to analyze how the program is running at the Mulcahy School so we can learn how that program was initiated and how it's running today. So that is part of the goal, is to analyze what is working well at the Mulcahy program with the four-year-old students who are in those two classes, to also then identify the potential to further expand beyond the current or the new Mulcahy. So there may be space in other schools where we could expand. Ideally, I would love to see a neighborhood model, which I think was one of our charges or one of our goals, to see if we could ever accomplish a neighborhood model, where we'd have a preschool program in every school, then they could just matriculate into kindergarten to make that seamless transition. But obviously, because of space limitations, we may have to start looking at regional or geographical zones for preschool classes. But yes, the work is to, obviously, not reinvent the wheel, analyze what we have in place, and see how we can improve and make it better.
So just, secondly, you have a letter here under item, under the item I, one, a dear colleague's letter, who, to whom did this letter get sent? Dear colleagues, please join me for an important conversation on Monday, October twenty-eighth.
Ms. Starry, all due respect, can we wait till we get there, please?
Yes, but Mr. Cabral just stated that he had already given his report. That's why I'm asking the question. So this is just for us, it wasn't, didn't get sent to anyone else?
It will be sent to all the CIT members as part of our kickoff on the twenty-eighth. But that was for your information, so you know what I am doing at all times.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. On the motion to accept the report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, next we have, I just misplaced my. Administrative Business Staffing Report.
She replaced her file.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Subcommittee reports, Finance and Law, Mr. Martin.
Finance and Law Subcommittee met earlier this evening, with myself, Mr. Fiore, Mr. Suzie, also in attendance, with the superintendent and assistant superintendent, Superintendent Cabral, that is, and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. First item on the agenda this evening was student activity requests. There were two, one is East Taunton Elementary School in the amount of three-thousand-nine-hundred-six dollars and eighty cents, and the second was Elizabeth Pole School for two-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. And that passed with no, no questions. Second item on the agenda was bills payable in the amount of one-million-three-hundred-ninety-six-thousand-eighty-five dollars and thirteen cents. And again, that item was passed with no one in opposition. We had a facilities update. The Bennett Playground will be active this Friday, weather permitting, I imagine, because it's supposed to rain a lot. There's one piece that will not be installed until the spring, but that will not prohibit students from using the facility. And the second update, I think, maybe I should turn this over to the mayor, is a Mulcahy School update. I know myself, I was concerned when the state put a stop to Columbia Gas from any further activity except for emergencies, and I said, what about the main at Mulcahy School? And I think through the mayor's office.
That permit came through today. They're gonna, if they didn't start work today, they're gonna be starting tomorrow.
To finish that main, that's necessary to keep us on schedule to open that building.
Weather permitting, tomorrow.
Weather permitting. And the third update would be from, I'm gonna refer to Ms. Monahan on this one, and I'll follow her comments with a motion.
Thank you. What we have in front of you, I believe everyone has, is a copy of the letter from NESRA Engineering. And what happened was, in the past, previously, NESRA Engineering has completed a study on, for our tennis courts, varsity baseball field, and the JV baseball field. So currently, what we've asked them to do is they've proposed a study to do almost like a master plan. And the master plan is to look at our track and field, the inset athletic field at the high school, the upper practice field adjacent to Williams Street, and the JV softball field with adjacent practice field. So what will happen is, again, this is a master plan, so we can have everything on, on file through a CAD program, also using drone aerial photos. And what NESRA will be doing is they will provide us with three schematic alternatives so we can decide if okay with, by the school committee and having the necessary funds, we can go ahead and move forward. So the first alternative, what they will provide is a high-end renovation, which will include the track and field, storage building, upper rectangular, rectangular practice field, junior varsity softball fields, and adjacent practice field. So that, again, is the high-end renovation. The second schematic alternative is, will just include the track and field renovations, storage buildings, and the upper rectangular practice field. The third alternative will be the bare minimum, and which will, that will do is, will be accomplishing to bring the track and field facility to modern competition standards. So all three alternatives will be accompanied by a probable construction cost estimate. So what this will do is, this scope of service will not exceed eighty-two-hundred dollars. And again, if school committee approves this, what happens is David Gay's office will review the contract and like he, that office does do for all of our contracts before authorizing any work.
Mr. D'Amello?
Thank you, Mr. Martin. So my question is this, so the, the master plan's developed by NESRA, we pay the eighty-two-hundred dollars, and it comes back that we are gonna adopt one of the three options. And let's just throw out a number, fifty million dollars, whatever that number is. How are we planning on starting this and funding this? So my, my, my concern is this. I don't want to spend eighty-two-hundred dollars and have something in front of us, and then we're not gonna implement this for three years. Because by the time we get to the implementation stage, the numbers that we have will no longer be valid. That's my concern.
Minimally, we are gonna do number three. Number three is for the track and the football field. It mentions field, but it's actually the football field. Because when we put that facility in place twelve years ago?
Yeah.
We created an account for maintenance of that facility. It's good for about eight to ten years, we've gotten twelve out of it. It needs to be refreshed. I think Mr. Cabral commented earlier at the Finance and Law Subcommittee meeting, if you walk on the baseball field, which is turf, and you walk on the softball field, it's a notable difference. The baseball, the football field, okay, I said softball. The football field is worn, it needs to be replaced. And that's why twelve years ago, we created an account to maintain that field properly. If we keep, we keep going with the way it is, we're gonna have to replace it. And we don't want to get to that stage, because we're looking at millions of dollars then. So minimally, and that's gonna be the motion, the motion is going to be, minimally, to, number one, have David Gay review the contract. Number two, come up with some specs for that track and field. And, three, and the alternatives, okay? The alternatives will be on the shelf, so to speak, but at least we'll have an idea what they're gonna cost, because they should be done down the road, too. You know, we've got a new baseball field, we've got a football field. Well, we've got some softball fields, too, that need some sprucing up. So, you know, down the road, we'll hopefully do something with those. But minimally, we're gonna do the track and the, and the football, football field.
Okay.
So the motion again was to have David Gay review the contract, not to exceed eighty-two-hundred dollars, see if anything's in place, and to take the money for the eighty-two-hundred dollars out of that maintenance account that was set up twelve years ago. And that passed this Finance and Law Subcommittee meeting.
Agreed. So if we think number, the third alternative, which is a necessity because of the wear and tear, do we need NESRA Engineering to provide us a master plan for that project? And again, my concern is, we, we, we're gonna. And again, my concern is, we, we, we're gonna evaluate all three, and it's gonna cost $8,200 to find out that we can't afford one, or we have to defer this, uh, for two years because we don't have the money to deal with it. So my, my, I'm, if I can just simplify this, if we need to do the football field and the track, 'cause I just walked the track on the cabbies day and looked nice, but I don't know anything about fields, uh, do we need to have a, uh, an engineering firm to tell us that we need to fix that field or bring it up to competitive levels?
Yes.
We do?
Yep. We, it's, it's like having a project manager for a, uh, for a new facility.
So it's gonna cost us $8,200.
Eighty-two hundred dollars.
Okay.
But it's also good to have those other items, at least have an idea what they're gonna cost, because, you know, in all fairness, our practice fields need to be upgraded, our softball fields need to be upgraded, and, you know, we've upgraded those other facilities. And it's a good idea to know what it's gonna cost. And besides, the $8,200 is not coming out of revolving, it's coming out of the athletic maintenance account that was set up 12 years ago.
Just, just for, if I could weigh into it before I go to other questions, just someone that's out there all the time, you know, we have our football field and track, when it was, when it was put in, was state-of-the-art, it was excellent, um, it was the envy of the region, but it's, it's, it's tired, and it's ti, it's ti, it's time to, um, bring that back up to standards, 'cause I know at Brockton, you know, a short time ago, they had, they had to basically suspend use of the field because it was tearing up, and we're not at that phase yet, but we have to do it now. But my point is, you know, we just installed the baseball field, so we have some facility in, in the field house and everything else. We have some facilities that are high-level and awesome, and then we have some that are deplorable. So what we have to do is, is make every, you know, bring some of the ones that are deplorable, like the JV softball field and the JV baseball field, to bring those up to standard and maintain the, the other ones that are at high level. So if we can, if we can bring those up, maintain, we, I, I think we have the best, one of the best facilities in the Commonwealth, so, and, and I know NESRA's done a lot of work with us in the past.
And he's done great work.
And they've done great work, and they're very reasonable in, in comparison to other firms. And I'll go over to Mr. Souza, and then...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. They did an outstanding job on the tennis courts and the, and the base, and the baseball budget.
I didn't bring that, I should've mentioned the tennis.
Tennis courts and the baseball field. That, that baseball field is an envy of the southeastern Massachussetts. And I think the more, I think to me, as an engineer, the most important thing is, we're getting a, we're getting a three-D dimensional, digitized view of all of our outside facilities. So at any point in time, we can take, we have a snapshot of what we have, topography and the whole, the whole, um, deal. That allows us to make some long-term plans. Initially, football field, replace the turf, but possibly, uh, put a, put a, uh, practice facility, uh, field over, over there on the upper level, and, um, possibly replace the JV softball field and things like that. It gives us a snapshot of where to go. So I think this is a sharp money, um, part of this project of, of replacing the field is getting that snapshot, getting that digitized, uh, view of what we actually have. So I think, I'm pretty excited about where we're headed with this. Thank you.
Ms. Almeida, then, Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you. How much money do we have in that maintenance account?
I don't have that currently right on, um, on hand, but I can get that for you.
What are we putting in there, about $50,000 a year, if I remember?
I don't, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, no, right now, we ended, we ended the fiscal year just over $3 million in total revolving, and on average, we've been bringing in around 1.1 million to 1.2 million a year is what we've been bringing in in revenue for total revolving. Uh, I know just on user fees alone, it's probably between, well, think about our budget priorities several years ago, we budgeted $80,000. So we're somewhere around the $80,000 in user fees is what we bring in. That doesn't include the rentals. Don't forget the rentals we bring in for the turf field and the rentals we're now bringing in for the baseball field.
So it's more than we had originally anticipated to put in that.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have enough money to take care of that for us?
If I can just throw my two cents into the ring, uh, I do hear where Mr. DeMello's coming from, um, but I also understand that there are times when the administration is asked to provide you with costs on what would it cost to do this, what would it cost to do that? So part of my rationale for having a comprehensive plan is that we know, moving forward down the road, that if a turf practice field is gonna cost us $800,000, then we know in two years or in three years, we should budget to install a turf practice field along William Street. Uh, if we know it's gonna cost us, the turf baseball field costs us 1.7, so a JV turf practice, uh, field might cost us, we might get the figure 1.1 million dollars. Now we know how much we have to budget, how much we have to plan for. So I see this as part of our long-range planning, and having this doc, having this document done provides us a lot of time and effort, 'cause now we can just go right out to bid, and once we have the money saved.
I agree.
That was the rationale. Go ahead.
I agree, and I think that it's more than I had anticipated that we were putting in there on a yearly basis, so I think if we look at what they're proposing, we might even do more than just that third option.
So we have to do, and the work is done.
Because, you know, if we have it there now, we should see, once we start digging, if they continue to dig a little bit more, there might be less money once they're there, when they go out to bid.
Thank you.
And go out to bid now, and we go out to bid next year, and then, uh, so, thank you.
Next was Mrs. Fagan. You all set?
Yeah, just a second question. When you're talking about that field, is, is that the whole substructure also, or is it just?
It's the new carpet.
Just the carpet, so the substructure's okay?
That we want the substructure to be okay. If we keep going, it's not gonna be...
Do you remember who originally did it? I remember Mr. Texera and I asked for that to go on the high school.
Yeah, I believe the original was Cape and Islands. That's the name I keep hearing, as far as in the region. But, and I will say, though, you bring up a good point, Mrs. Fagan, so as we're doing that investigative work, as you know, doing all the tinkering around your home, when you go behind the panel, you sometimes find something you weren't expecting, so part of the investigative work may uncover some deficiencies, maybe with the draining, maybe they, we need to put more sand, or, I don't know, one of the pipes may have cracked, so but during that work, we will uncover. That's why we always build in a contingency when we go out to bid.
Well, I'm just curious, just, just my identification, why wouldn't we go back to whoever did it in the first place as opposed to just doing?
We'd have to go out to bid.
Uh, we have to go out to bid. Cape and Islands just did the installation. They didn't do the design work, they did the installation. I believe the design work was part of the high school renovation. So that would've been design partnership?
Yeah, I wanted, Mr. Texera and I wanted, wanted to get that done, it was, it was a great amenity, it served us really well. All right, thank you.
Mr. Fury.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned during the Finance and Law Subcommittee, dealing with, uh, softball fields is finally addressing the very serious issue of equity for girls' sports, too. We put so much into the, into the boys' baseball field and so forth, I think it's only fair, particularly since the girls' softball field has actually won more state championships than the baseball team has, and I, I think they're much deserving of improvements.
See, one year in, we already won.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms., I'm gonna go to Mr. DeMello, and I'll give you, you can have the floor back. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanna be clear, I fully support athletics, I'm on the athletics Subcommittee, we, like Mr. Fury said, we had a state championship softball team, we had a men's, uh, baseball state championship team. What I get scared of, and, and kind of like went back in my chairs, when I see in quotes, "high-end renovation." So when you see something like that, "high-end renovation," it scares me. So I'm just trying to be a little bit, how should I say, cautious, that we don't have these grandiose plans to build a Taj Mahal when we don't have, uh, actual budgeting in place. And yes, we have all these accounts with all this money, but again, I, "high-end renovation" in quotes scared me off, so I apologize for being scared, I fully support athletics, and I have no problem with the $8,200. Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Just to go back to Mr. DeMello's concern earlier about the track, the track is in decent shape, okay? And what they'll do with the track is, they will not remove it, they'll just put a top coat on it and re-stripe it. So again, that's minimal cost, when, when you look at putting a track in from scratch. So you wanna ma, you just wanna maintain it, that's all we wanna do, 'cause it's worn. I mean, you, you talk to people that run, track team and so forth, that track is worn, okay? It needs to be upgraded.
I was gonna say, the tennis courts look beautiful. If you haven't seen the tennis courts over the Oakland Educational Complex, they, they look like they're brand new. It was, it's amazing, the transformation. Mr. Souza?
Motion to accept the Finance and Law Subcommittee report and adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee.
I'm second.
Motion made in second, undiscussed. Mr. DeMello.
Uh, I respectfully ask my colleagues that I vote present on page number four, voucher number 12486, in the amount of $475.
I'd be part of my motion to have Mr. DeMello vote present.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. New business? We already done that? Anybody have any new business? Oh, I'm sorry, I went, almost went right by Mr. Chairman Souza's report, I'm...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Been waiting for that all, all night.
Appreciate it, I've been waiting for this the whole night. The Unit Day Subcommittee met this afternoon, myself and Mrs. Fagan met with the, uh, TEA Labor Management, and, uh, from the administration was Mr. Cabral and Mr. Barata, and they had four minor issues that we discussed, and the administration's taken them under advisement and is moving forward at getting them the answers, and that's the report of the TEA, uh, excuse me, the Unit Day Subcommittee.
Motion, is there a motion? So, motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. New business? We've already addressed that item, any further new business? We move on to unfinished business action items. Chairman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is what we've been really waiting for all night.
No, I, I was ready, I'd say, yeah. All right, there's, uh, is there any members that have any, uh, changes, any of this stuff on there? We have February strategic planning process on hold, I believe that's still in process. The 15th of May, we had, uh, safety officer Chris Williams review the signage at Edward J., uh, Edward F. Letty Preschool. There is an update on that. It went to council, it was referred to DPW in the audience committee for review. Assistant City Clerk Jen Ledger referred it over October 8th, just to give you that update.
It's still pending.
It's still pending, I know Officer Williams did an excellent job evaluating that area. Next is September 4th, it was referred to the Long Range Planning School Property Subcommittee, uh, adding an academic building in addition to the Taunton High School for the band. So that's the 21st being met, so it's in the works. The 4th, you also referred to Finance and Law, and the FY21 budgets, review costs for all available technology and options to improve bus and van safety. I guess that'll take a little longer to get back.
I think you have a response for the next few meetings.
All right. And then the rest are all still in process. Any questions on the other final items from October?
So we've already made those changes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. I lost the agenda again.
All it is is, uh, critical items.
Critical items.
Mr. Mayor, I, um, I hear there's a possibility this could be your last official...
I, I plan on hopefully attending the, next week.
But, uh, this could be your last official meeting in this building, and an official School Committee meeting, and I know that next week we have a, uh, recognition meeting, so, um, I think probably we'll go around the horn here, but I'll start out...
You don't have to.
I think I'll start out with, I heard we're gonna start the roast about 8:30, so, um, right about, we're right on time right about now.
It's after 8:30.
I, I, the only thing I'll say, um, on behalf of my family, to your family, I wish you good luck. Thank you, not only what you've done for the city, but thank you what you've done for the children of Taunton. There's a lot of things we could call you, but I know I can call you the education mayor, because you've supported education the eight years that I've served with you. And, uh, for that, the children of Taunton should be thankful. And as far as a citizen of Taunton, you've done a lot of good, and, uh, thank you on behalf of the citizens of Taunton, and myself and my family.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Stardi?
Oh, boy. Well, I, first, wherever I have met, um, Mayor Hoy in the community, whether it's been here or in the community, I've always referred to him as my mayor, so I am going to now officially retire the title, uh, for the mayor as my mayor. Uh, I'll be in love with the other, whatever mayor is, whatever person is elected as mayor, but you will be my mayor forever, so thank you very much, and have, fully appreciate, in addition to that, the, the very loving sarcasm and joke, jokester kind of aura that you carry with you. It's been a lot of fun, um, and as my colleague has said, you've contributed a great deal to the children and citizens of the community, and thank you very much, and all the best in your next adventure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You going around?
Well, are we?
Yeah, but going around.
I didn't know, I didn't know we were doing this.
You would've prepared, you would've prepared...
I gotta get a picture of water.
You're leaving?
You're the last guy to know.
Hasn't been controversial.
David said the pot roast was that nice.
Well, in my, uh, tenure, I've worked with a lot of mayors, and you're right up the top, and, uh, I mean that.
Thank you.
And I wish you the best, and it's been a pleasure working with you, and I'm sure we'll be crossing paths in the future.
Probably once or twice.
A day.
Usually, yeah.
But again, I wanna thank you for everything you've done for the school system, and, uh, wish you the best, you and your family.
Thanks, Joe.
I've known him a long time.
Well, I don't know.
Since he was that kid.
She remembers when you were five.
Watched you from the time you started off on the council as a young man, watched you have a wonderful wife and a beautiful family, and, uh...
It's not on.
Was on your team, decided to run for mayor, now be on your team when you leave, and I wish you the best, and you know how I feel, it's for your family that you're doing this, and I think it's a great...
Thank you, Auntie Jody.
You're welcome.
Kahal, you should have a lot of great things to say.
Well, Mayor T, I've known you since back in the 80s at the Taunton YMCA with our mentor original, Bob Sessesserini. Uh, I won't steal any other thunder, I've known Mayor Hoy a very long time, consider him a friend and a mentor. Tom's been a good guy since I was in probably, what, middle school? He was always a leader, a role model, and a responsible peer to all of us down the Y. We were a very diverse, varied bunch of kids. Sess was a very good mentor, but he was a diverse guy, he was a character out of Brockton, one of a kind, never another one like him. And Tom was always a, somebody all the adults could rely on and all of us young guys could rely on. He was always, he would always back up anybody who needed help. He was a teacher and a coach before that was even possible, we were all just kids. And he's, all throughout his career, whether he was down the Y, whether he was doing athletic training, whether he was working as a school teacher, whether he was the original DPW chairman at the city council for over a decade, whether he was the Clean Streets Mayor, I mean, everything goes back to when I knew him as a kid and became friends with him. He's still the same honest, hard-working guy with a really big heart and, you know, a strong backbone, and I wish you all the best for everything, and I said this at the other event, whatever that, the conflagration or whatever it was, whatever, convocation, I, I'm not a literate guy, I'm a... Well, Sarah Buckley's gonna write me up, I'll be in, I'll be in Saturday detention, setting up the chairs at the Ruben Field House. Yeah, I'm being shut off. No, no, um, no, Mayor Hoy's been very, very good to everyone he's ever been around, and he's always been there for people who needed it, and I wish you the very best of luck on behalf of all of us who knew you down the Y when you were just Tommy. You're still a good guy, you never forgot where you came from, and all of us that knew you back then are really proud to know you, and you've helped us all out a lot more than we could ever thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you, Kahal.
I just, I'll be brief in my comments, 'cause I haven't known Tom that long, but I will, what I will say is, I remember Mayor Hoy, when he was the adapted phys ed teacher working at Freeman Middle School, I may have been the assistant principal or principal, and I remember Mayor Hoy coming up to me at the time and saying, "No, I'm thinking about becoming an administrator and maybe doing some hours," and he's by far just surpassed that. He went from, they bypassed being an assistant principal, principal, going right to being a mayor. So, I just want to say, you've been an outstanding job as a mayor, and what I remember most, and it tells a lot about your character, is that you worked with a lot of our severely special needs students, and you treated those students the way they should have been treated, like gold, and that's the way you treat all the individuals that you interact with. So, it's just, you know, you set a high moral standard, you walk the walk, you talk the talk, and you back it up with your actions every day, so. I appreciate the support you've given the school department, I enjoyed net school spending and end-of-the-year reports and getting you to sign that document, I'm going to miss that, we've got one more, we've got one more for you to sign, but I do want to say, thank you for all your support on behalf of the students and the staff in the Taunton Public Schools, Tom.
Thanks, Joe.
Well, this is coming to the end of my second six-year iteration on the school committee. In the first one, I went through three mayors. In this, in this one...
That's a little something for a river.
Anyway, it's, it's been nice to have consistency over, over this period of time. I've actually known Tom from the very beginning, he was born just before I had his dad as my world history teacher at Taunton High, and I've got to know him as a grown-up through the, through the Y. I'm also the only one here who's had the privilege of serving on the council with him before.
That was true.
I suppose, yes, yes it was, yes it was. And I certainly enjoyed the encouragement of his administration when I did decide to, to come back here, it's been a joy working with him, and again, I have to reiterate what everybody has said, definitely been an education mayor, you've been more reliable on the funding than anyone I have, I have experienced, and actually, when you count the, the council service and so forth, I've actually been through five mayors, and you've definitely been outstanding, and I only hope that our future is half as reliable as it's been with him.
Thank you, Joe. I hope Bob News is listening right now.
He's on Vimeo.
Don't fall, but I'm...
Is that Peter Quozzo?
Mr. Mayor, being a freshman on this committee, I have served under no other mayor, so you are my favorite mayor. All kidding aside, thank you so much for your leadership, especially as a freshman member, and of course, your family values, what you represent for the entire city, for being my mayor as a citizen, and what I value most about you, whether it's school committee or city business, you tell it like it is. You had the hard conversations, you don't BS anybody. If it's, if it's a fact, it's a fact, if it's a lie, it's a lie. And I value that most about you, and take that with you to your next career, and I know you will, and enjoy your family and the new, new adventure we're here for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
I'm always last.
The best for last, Auntie Christine.
Number one, Christine.
Thank you. I'm sorry to see you go, I, this has been a good run, and I'm real fortunate because my family's all intertwined with your family.
Not like that.
No, I, you know what I mean. Your brother went to school with my Tommy. You always do this to me. This is why I'm afraid to say, what?
Say more.
Say more. No, it just, the relationships that we, we've had between us, because you, you were friends with my, my older kids, and, you know, you, I know you went to class with my son Dan, and went to the gym with Mike and his wife, and I, I know you all had a great relationship, and I really appreciate that. I, Crepe, your father and I are real good friends, we do masses together at the church, we're always going in between being lecters around Easter time, so I'm sure I'll see you somewhere along the line. I wish you all, I wish you all the best, I am going to miss you, it's going to be different, and I can work with anybody, so that'll be fine, but I'll, I'll miss the relationship that, that we've had over the years, and I wish you all the best, and I mean that.
Thank you, Christine, thank you, thank you all.
Tell us, sit down.
Yeah, yeah, sit down. Never had one of those before, so I'm kind of soaking it all in.
He was enjoying it.
But it's, it's certainly been great, this committee, I've had a lot of fun, as much as I complain about coming sometimes, it is a joy, you know, I've, I've had fun, we've, we've had some hard discussions, we've had some hard, you know, situations, but we've done some great things, a lot of great things, and I'm proud of the work we've all done together, both on the city side and on the school side, and, you know, it's been such a great relationship, and leadership is about bringing people together, and making collective decisions that are the best for everyone, and that's what I've always tried to bring to the table, that sense of unity, that, that sense that we're all in it together. It's never, I think some of the reason, you know, I've had some successes, because it's never been about me, it's always been about the community and how we can make it better. And, you know, I hope, you know, we all get caught up in the campaigning and trying to get the most votes we can, and that's, that's part of the process, but what brings us together, what brings us here is what we give to the community and what we give to, in this case, our students and our staff, and creating the best learning environment possible, and it's great to see the upgrades, it's great to see the changes. We've seen some huge capital additions, you know, we think of the transformation of Bennett and Martin, you know, with the roof and window program, same with Galligan, we're going to see a new Mulcahy School. We've seen the renovations to the high school, the upgrades to the facility, but it's what happens within the buildings, within the labs, on the athletic field, and everywhere else, all the clubs and great organizations that we have in the Taunton Public Schools, it's what happens there that's important, and, you know, I'm glad that we've come together to make a better place for our community, and for that, I thank all of you for your input, and it's been a pleasure, it's been, you know, it's, it's the best job I'll ever have. But you also, you know, you have to know when it's time, and for me, it's time, and I thank, again, I thank everyone for their support, it's, it's been a great run, and I, hopefully, if everything goes according to plan, I'm not sure exactly when I'm leaving yet, probably around the second week of November at, at some point, but I'll be giving my farewell remarks at the city council meeting on, if everything works out the way I plan it working out, on October twenty-ninth, I'd certainly like to see everyone there, if you can make it, on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, we'll have some food available for everyone, so I know that'll draw some of you in. Yeah, somebody pick up Peter Core, Peter, if you're listening, I want, I want you, I want you, I want you there. No cookies and nothing to go. But, again, thank, thank you all, again, through, through the good times, the tough times, you know, we've made it through, and we've made it a better place, so thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And bring on the divorces and the probate estates, so we can keep them busy in the new place.
Thanks, thank, thank you, Jordan.
Don't forget, don't forget press time.
Is there a press time?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What time is that, Christine?